Going to call the meeting of Quincy City Council Finance Committee to order. Clerk will read the role.
Counselor Andronico, Counselor King, Counselor DeBona, Counselor Harris, Counselor Liang, Counselor Mahoney, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Palmucci, Chairman Phelan.
President.
Five members, you have a form.
I'm going to read the open meeting law into the record. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person can make an audio or video recording of this public hearing or may transmit the meeting throughout any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. So we have Counselor Harris. Okay. At this time, we're going to start off with the first amendment, with the first item on the agenda. We're going to receive a presentation from a team all about the DIF and the various things on the item agenda in the presentation. So at this time, we're going to turn it over to Chief of Staff Chris Walker.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good evening, councilors. On behalf of Mayor Koch, thank you for the opportunity to the team to provide an update on the downtown redevelopment activities, the investments made to date, and the request before you this evening to continue the district improvement financing program to fund the necessary infrastructure to continue the progress downtown. I wanted, Mr. Chairman, before handing it over to the team, just to add an additional word of thanks from Mayor Koch to this body. This has been, going back more than a decade now, a true partnership, and this body deserves a lot of credit for that. There was a time when we would be in this room deliberating, discussing downtown initiatives, and it was about what if, what could, what maybe. Tonight, we're here talking about what is. The progress that has been made downtown based upon the work of this body in partnership with Mayor Koch and our state legislative delegation and the governor's office is real. It's tangible, it exists, you can see it. And through you, this body has been a true public-private partnership. So thank you, and we look forward to continuing to work together as we continue to make progress downtown. Mr. Chairman, tonight on the team, we have with us Rob Stevens, Deputy Planning Director, who's going to lead the presentation. We also have Planning Director James Fatsis, Assistant Planner Joe King, and our new planner Joanna Pavli with us tonight. We have Special Counsel to the Mayor for Downtown Bill Geary, Joe Shea of Granite City Partners, who has been with us from the very beginning on the civil engineering side, Craig Seymour from RKG Associates, who's been with us from the very beginning on the financial side, working through the DIF and the analysis and making sure that what we can do, what we do do is supported by the revenue, and he'll be able to clarify that tonight as well. We have R.J. Dowling from Wooden Inc., again, with us from the very beginning on the civil engineering side. We also have Eric Mason, Municipal Finance, Director of Municipal Finance. I think I got everybody on the team. With that, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, what we thought we would do, which has worked out pretty well in the past with the committee's indulgence, is go through the presentation, listen to that round, listen to the questions from the councilors, not struggle to answer everything on our feet this evening, but with the expectation that we'll be back before this body in a week's time, roughly a week's time, I believe next Tuesday, to answer any of those follow-up questions that are not immediately available to the team right now. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I turn it over to Mr. Stevens. Thank you.
Stevens. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the entire city council. It's always great to be back here with this group. I would echo Mr. Walker's comments that we've always shared a great support from this body whenever we've been before providing updates on our downtown efforts, as well as a lot of the financing. So I'm really excited to give you the downtown update, an update on the DIF III spending, and then a discussion on the DIF IV request that we are making at this time. I think any update has to start with the beginning because you need to know how we get here today, and that started over a decade ago. The city did adopt new zoning, the Quincy Center zoning districts, and we were able to incorporate design guidelines back in 2005. That was followed by a vision plan. We felt that the zoning wasn't enough to really spur private investment. And then from the vision plan, we had the Urban Renewal Plan first established, as well as the DIF Invested Revenue Plan. And that was accompanied with an initial $40 million DIF bond authorization. That largely went to the construction of the Hanan Parkway, but it also helped us get going on a number of other planning and engineering-related issues. Soon after that, Amendment Number One and Amendment Number Two to the Urban Renewal Plan were adopted. That was with the Streetworks Master Developer coming into the picture. Amendment One, I put it here, it introduced the Certificate of Consistency Review Process that is performed by the Planning Board, which is a unique process to urban renewal that's still used today. Amendment One also introduced the use of the Mass General Law Chapter 121A Financing Program, and that is also in use today as well, so I thought it was important to make that note. And then Amendment Two to the Urban Renewal Plan, that was the plan that incorporated the Streetworks Master Development Agreement. That agreement came with it $289 million in public financing to fund that program. And for the next couple of years, we worked really hard to get that program going. Didn't ultimately work out, so I think, as most folks know, that deal, that land disposition agreement was terminated in 2013. From there, the city went and hired Redgate Real Estate Advisors. They did a top-to-bottom look at downtown, at the different regulations, the financing, the needs, opportunities, and constraints. That plan, the result of that plan, came back and reaffirmed to the city that Quincy Center was primed for redevelopment. Using that lesson with the Streetworks Master Developer, with the Redgate Plan, the city did go forward with two additional amendments, Amendment Three here and Amendment Number Four. Now, both of those amendments occurred within the same year. I kind of look at them at this point as almost sort of one amendment. We did move forward with a boundary change and expanded the urban renewal boundary to capture the Quincy Center MBTA station. At that time, the city was working with the MBTA, pursuing a number of federal grant opportunities. We thought it was a benefit to have that T station in the urban renewal district at that time. Later that year, we did go ahead and file Amendment Number Four to the Urban Renewal Plan. Amendment Four really pivoted away from the master development version that led to the Streetworks and then put the city in a master developer position on the city-owned lots, the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage. We had a focus on the Hancock Lot, identifying development sites in that five-acre lot, and then determining the sighting and the size of the garage. To accompany those, Urban Renewal Amendment Number Three and ultimately Number Four was the second DIF bond authorization for $80 million that constructed the garage, the Kilroy Garage, and all of the infrastructure in the Hancock Lot. I move to Urban Renewal Amendment Number Five, and that is the current active urban renewal amendment the city is working off of. That was adopted by this council back in 2019. And for this amendment, we did shift our focus off of the Hancock Lot over to the Ross Garage area, trying to unlock and set up new development sites over there. We've also identified a number of properties along the west side of Hancock Street that were decadent and continue to remain in that condition for some time. We also, in the overall redevelopment strategy, did identify the MBTA, had issued a request for proposals to redevelop the Quincy Center Station site. We identified another property, a property that had been in a burnt-out condition for close to 20 years, south of Hanan Parkway. And this amendment also set up the Ross North Parcel Land Disposition Agreement that the Planning Board earlier this year approved, a 240,000-square-foot medical office lab building at that location. One other piece, the city, through Amendment Number Five, currently or did acquire 1565 Hancock Street, it's the old Quincy Fair Mall site, as well as 100 Parking Way. Those sites are needed for interim parking and phasing for the construction. Those are still needed for those uses, but the city does believe those will be future development sites once the second garage is developed. Now, to accompany Urban Renewal Amendment Five in 2019, the city put before this body the third DIF bond authorization. It is for $61 million, and that looked to do a lot of soil cleanup in the Ross Lot area. It also secured the General's Bridge and the new Clive and Extension roadway right-of-way, and it also included the construction of McConville Way and all these subsurface utilities over in that area. So that's what we've been doing since Urban Renewal Five was approved three years ago in 2019. Another portion of my presentation tonight is on the DIF IV request that we are making. It's for an additional $53 million. This is also carrying out the activities we contemplated in Urban Renewal Amendment Number Five, specifically some additional land acquisitions on the west of Hancock Street, and then some additional roadway surface and subsurface improvements. I will get into detail on both DIF III and DIF IV a little bit later in my presentation. Wanted to talk about private investment in the city that we've seen, and this is private investment that came forward without any of the benefits of the urban renewal. It came forward through the rehab or improvements to existing buildings. It came forward under straight Quincy Center zoning districts, and I think this is a good representative of some of the follow-on development we're seeing with a lot of the investment the city's made through the Urban Renewal Plan. Stop &amp; Shop Headquarters has expanded across the street into 10 Granite Street and added some additional office space there. President's Place is going through a $30 million conversion of a number of its existing commercial space to make it ready for life science users. 2539 Temple Street has added two stories to that existing two-story building. That's going to provide housing, affordable housing towards veterans, so that's a really exciting project. We also have the 1433 Hancock Street. That was a gut rehab of that building. It's next to the Greenleaf Building, and I think a lot of folks have seen the facade of that has been torn down and repointed. The Masonic Temple, the Planning Board, I think late last year, approved a redevelopment of that site, where that developer is keeping what was left of the stone building out front and rehabbing that and repurposing that with the construction of residential units in a new structure behind that building. Across the street, 1200 Hancock Street, some folks might know it as the Citizens Bank Building, that's also been torn down in conjunction with the Masonic Temple project, and that will become a new mixed juice, 135 units, first-floor retail, new development rate there. So those are projects that just the market is advancing at this time, and I think that's a great sign here in Quincy Center. So looking a little bit beyond 2022, I listed a number of items here. We've got the final Quincy Center MBTA Station redevelopment program. There's been quite a bit of work on the infrastructure, the busways, the railway, a lot of the connectivity. So we're still waiting to hear from the T and their development partner on moving forward with that development. We've also been working with DCAM, which is the state agency in charge of state buildings. The Bellotti District Courthouse is one of the state's highest priorities to be replaced, so we're working with that team. We also have the redevelopment at 1245 Hancock Street. And then we're starting to see, in the Planning Department, redevelopment interest start to sprout south of Hanan Parkway, down on School Street. We're also getting some interest across the way at the Star Market site and the Grossman's Plaza. And I threw this last bullet in, I know this council was briefed a few meetings ago about the state's new MBTA communities legislation. It's our belief that a lot of the development occurring in Quincy Center around the Quincy Center T Station will help the city qualify for that legislation. Some of the other elements with Quincy Center that we're seeing is, and I think a few of the councilors here may have experienced this in their wards, is we are seeing some redevelopment interest continue over in the Spear Street and Newcombe Street area. That's just outside the downtown, sort of between Connington and McGrath Highway. A handful of projects have been approved and interest in more projects getting redeveloped in that area. We're also starting to see redevelopment interest run down the parkingway and down into Franklin Street in that corridor. Franklin Street, I think, a lot of times gets lost because so much focus is given to Quincy Center, but it is one of those commercial districts that are an extension, and we're real excited to see some redevelopment in that corridor, and that corridor won't get left behind. I think, knocking on wood, I'd like to think we're beyond the worst of the COVID pandemic, and I think this season, this summer season, we're seeing an increase in the tourist activity, and I think a lot of those folks are looking forward to having a good summer this year. I think we're seeing a lot more events starting to get planned in the public spaces we're building, which is really exciting to see that activity. And I do want to point out, I had the chance to work with the Northeastern University graduate students who did a focus on the President's Trail in their fall semester, which looked at the John Adams, John Quincy Adams historic sites here in Quincy, and looked at ways to make it better through wayfinding. It was a really neat experience to work with those kids. And I think there is a book that is produced, you guys should take a look at it. We're working internally with T-PAL, the city engineer, looking at some ways to implement some of the recommendations out of that. Even if we do have new sidewalks, we could always get better with wayfinding and signage, and it's really neat to sort of come back around and have that focus, but also to be able to work with the students who have a fresh perspective on a lot of our opportunities and constraints here in Quincy Center. That was an awful lot of material. I think in the books that you guys were provided, we went ahead and printed large formats of these new maps. We had these maps updated. A lot of the solid pink shows the accomplishments that the city's already achieved. A lot of the roadway work, the solid pink means subsurface and surface improvements have worked. We've worked in a lot of the development sites that have occurred, those are in solid pink. Some of the development that has been approved or permitted or maybe not finished construction, we have the dark black lines that are stripes. But it really demonstrates the focus we've had in around this area with the church. We sort of called this the civic neighborhood of downtown way back in the beginning with government and religious services. Then you had further south, you had the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage, and you see a lot of that activity here. With some of the 2022 and beyond, you can sort of see where, towards the bottom left, how the downtown, our activities are sort of leading to School Street, leading to Bergen Parkway, and that area is the likely area we're going to see development come next. So with that, I'm going to move to the third DIF bond authorization that was approved with Urban Renewal Amendment Number Five. This is the funding the city's been working on for the last couple of years. And I do believe municipal finance has provided a lot of the details of the financials of how that money was spent. Here is sort of a universal spreadsheet, and these are the number of categories that we had. We had categories up to 10. We had the original budget, we've put in there actual expenditures and what was encumbered or what remains encumbered and what remains available. The last column I'd want to point out, we listed GMP because, back to that Chapter 121A legislation, the city has the ability to designate a private entity to construct public improvements. So after the DIF III was funded, the GMPs, or Guaranteed Maximum Price contracts, that were negotiated. Once those were negotiated, then you've got budget transfers, and we created, at the very bottom, Category 11 on this spreadsheet would be the GMP line item, a total of $25 million. And from there, that's where the actual expenditures occurred, would have been out of that line item. So that's a very quick breakdown of cash flow. Again, I do believe municipal finance provided a lot of the details. And before I sort of move on, I'm going to dive a little bit deeper into the two through six categories, but Category One is interim parking. That was some leftover funding from the construction of the Kilroy Garage, so that was, I think, needed for about a year, but we haven't spent the interim parking in some time. So with the DIF III request, we included this graphic. I think the big pivot was, the second bond request was the Hancock Lot, Kilroy Garage. This request, the third, we shifted over into the Ross Lot area and the construction of McConville Way and the creation of or unlocking these new development sites. Okay, so into the Category Two on DIF III. So the Category Two was environmental remediation of the YR3, so this is some leftover Hancock Lot elements. Environmental remediation, and then we had the sewer lining, which is that green line on Hancock Street going down Hanan Parkway. And there was also telecommunications on this category as well. Category Four I'll pick up in a second. So Category Three. Category Three, this is the one we shifted into Ross Garage. This one had the soil remediation, which was substantial. We had a number of impacted soils. We discovered this when we started to demolish the Ross Garage, and then the nature and extent is one of the activities that the city has been following over in that area. Category Three also brings in the subsurface improvements into McConville Way, so that's all your water, sewer, and electrical. Let's see here. Okay. Category Four was property acquisition, relocation, and demolition for the roadway right-of-way and streetscape improvements. So the Clive and Bridge, we refer to it, I think it was 37-hour parkingway where the bridge comes over, the train tracks, there's a slice of land there. And then as the new roadway crosses existing McConville Way up to Hancock Street, there was an additional property acquisition to bring that roadway down into the second garage. Wanted to point out that the bridge itself was constructed by Mass DOT, using Mass DOT funds. Okay, and then Category Five. Category Five was the roadway construction itself, the surface improvements. As you'll see with a lot of the infrastructure, we target the subsurface, which is pretty substantial, and then obviously the surface elements. So this Category Five is the surface roadway realignment. Let's see here. Paving, sidewalks, as well as the civic space. The General's Park was constructed under Category Five. Okay. Category Six, under the third DIF request, was to begin design and sighting of the second garage. Let's see here. So wanted to point out to you, on this picture, we've got, the top two images are the switchpoint redevelopment. This is the Fox Rock project that was just approved. The picture on the top left, I wanted to point out that as part of that redevelopment, Fox Rock will construct a private garage of approximately 500 spaces, and that's in the center of that development. The image on the top right is a street image of that, where, following the urban renewal principles we have for downtown, we didn't want parking garages becoming our street frontage, so Fox Rock had proposed retail out in front of the garage to try to shield the look of that garage and the functionality. As we go to the bottom, two images, these are two conceptual designs of the Ross Garage. One of the concerns that we continue to work on is how big this garage will be. Working with the Fox Rock team, recognizing that they were able to incorporate a garage into their own development changes those numbers. Working with new and future redevelopers, getting to understand their building programs and their parking needs is going to change those numbers. What we do know is that sort of square block there at Bergen Parkway and Hanan Parkway will be needed. This garage will be at least 1,000 spaces. It could rise from that as the project and other development interest comes forward, but at this point, we know it's at least 1,000 spaces. So that was the Category Six on the DIF III. That's where we're at at this stage. And then the remaining categories were consultant services, well, the remaining categories, I don't have a slide for, would be MEPA compliance. There was a Town Brook Master Plan, that's flooding, the engineering, that's financing the engineering department's inundation modeling for this area in the Town Brook. There was some other intersection updates we did, all part of the MEPA mitigation. Category Eight was consultant services. Category Nine was legal services, and then Category Ten was operations. I think those three, back to the submission by municipal finance, that has a lot of the details. I would expect questions, and then we'll try to answer those. And then just, point note again, that for the spreadsheet you see in this presentation, we added a Category 11 to identify the guaranteed maximum price line items. In the past, I've updated this council on our ability to secure state and federal funds. I've updated that spreadsheet. What I did is I captured the first 10 years, 2004, 2014. Instead of having it, you know, a big, long list, I just bundled that first 10 years to $34 million in financing. Since the bridge was just completed, we started that in 2014. I had added, I kept that as the starting point, 2014, so in the last eight years, you can see a number of the grants we've been able to get, but it also totals close to the first 10 years, about $33 million. In addition to the grant funds you see listed, the city continues to have a $40 million iQub investment from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. What's really needed for iQub is jobs, new income tax, sales tax is the funding sources the state looks for that program. And the city is also aggressively pursuing a lot of the federal infrastructure funding that is out there and available. Okay. With that, I'm going to move to the DIF Four, the fourth DIF funding request. So the fourth DIF funding request totals $53 million. This one is broken down into nine categories. This one is broken down into nine categories. Let's see here. And I'm going to move. The graphic that you've seen on the prior submissions has been updated again. So we've got a new map in that package. The first three categories deal with land acquisition. And there's been two properties identified on the west of Hancock for acquisition and civic space improvements. And then we have a second property located, again, where we think Garage Number 2 is going to be, over by Bergen Parkway and the Paul Harold Bridge, Hanham Parkway. And then there is a fourth and final property targeted for acquisition, which is down south of Hanham Parkway. It's a building that's been burnt out for some time and no plans for redevelopment. So those first three categories in the DIF 4 amounts to about half of this whole request. I bundle it as acquisition, relocation, and then, you know, building remediation and demolition. The fourth category is environmental and pre-characterization and soil management. As I've sort of mentioned, our work over in the Ross area has revealed quite a bit of impacted soils that just need to be managed and moved off-site. So that's what the environmental work is done. Then we have the subsurface utility improvements. So this is, again, another category. We're looking at, going back into McConville Way. The conduit for electrical service has been provided, but the city needs to help finance the private utility providers for them to energize those lines. We've also have been notified of, the gas line needs to be installed under the sidewalk at that location, is something that they couldn't do prior due to the safety concerns working with that product. Subsurface, that's, we've also got some remnant water main work that'll be constructed once the medical office lab space building at the Fox Rock North parcel is constructed. We needed to know the layout of that to finish that work. And there is some other smaller surface utility work, subsurface utility work that needs to be completed with the details, again, in your DIF package. The next category in DIF would be the surface public improvements. We've identified civic space at the location of Hancock Street at 1455 and 1459. There is some concepts, again, this is showing six different concepts. There's a printout of each one, again, in your DIF book to take a look. We've also identified civic space enhancements down at Hancock and Elm Street, back to that block south of Hanham Parkway. Not only is the city looking to acquire that 1601, we believe, you know, the property next to it has been put on the market recently. So we are expecting some redevelopment activity to occur down at that block. So we've budgeted some funds for some surface and some public space improvements. And sort of another reason why tying back to the President's trail work that the kids from Northeastern did, they picked up on that location, there's a tree there, and thought that, you know, some enhancements to pivot folks to the birthplaces, you know, that could, you know, really do a good job. We have the "Welcome to Quincy Center" sign there as well. So that's really a gateway piece. We've identified that. We've also got the intersection work at Parking Way. We've got to realign the intersection. That was McConville Way coming through. Now we need to realign it to Parking Way to head up to School Street. The city did receive a MassWorks grant of $2.3 million to help finance that, but that activity will cost a little bit more than that. So there's some funding in it as well. And then Hancock Street sidewalk improvements. The Hancock Street itself was paved, but the west side of Hancock needed some sidewalk again. Here's an image. You can see up on the Hancock Street, I used a dark line for the sidewalk work. You can see the proposed civic space. And then as you drift down to Hanham Parkway, you can see the intersection work, and that's going to trigger some additional Hancock Court work that'd need to get done. The final few categories in DIF 4 is, again, consultant services, legal services, and operations. We estimated a 36-month run total on these services and then budgeted out based off of that. And with that, I am going to hand this over to Craig Seymour, Senior Advisor to Arcade G Associates, to run through some of the DIF model work that his firm has done and assisted the city with.
Mr. Chairman, and through you, members of the council, it's truly an honor to be back here in front of you again. It's been two, two and a half years, I believe, as a result of COVID and everything else going on before we've been able to have meetings like this. I see many familiar faces. But what I would like to do to talk about DIF 4 is really start back a little bit with an introduction to the basic DIF concept and before leading into the more detailed numbers relative to this particular request. What you see in front of you is the basic DIF concept of how tax increment financing works. And I apologize again if some of you have seen this, but it's always good to refresh our heads about this. We have a base of assessed value within the district that's been designated as the tax increment financing area, the DIF area. New development, new investment in that creates an incremental assessment base, which then gets taxed. And what we do is we pull off the tax from that new increment and use that in order to finance the infrastructure, the public infrastructure necessary to create the value that we forecast out for the future. We have created, and as you mentioned earlier, from the beginning when we started this, a financial model for downtown Quincy. It's a complex model, but what it does is tracks the property values of every parcel in the downtown and then applies an analysis to that and then a forecast to that based upon development programs as to what the future value would be and what the tax revenue coming from that would be. It begins with the base year data, which is fiscal year 2006, when the DIF was originally created by the council. Each year, current assessment values are added in, the current tax rates are applied, and we also look backwards and get historic growth of the assessment values, which has been about 1% per year going back to 2006. We then look forward at the development program, the residential, the commercial, and the timing of new development coming in and the phasing of that relative to the tax base. And then the output, applying that to the model, what the output is, is we estimate the tax increment coming off of that, what the tax benefits from that, in other words, new tax, brand-new tax revenue, as well as the jobs and the new residential spending and those types of things. And then from that, we estimate what the model, the output is in terms of the bonding capacity that you can be supported by that TIF. One thing I'll emphasize again is that we've taken, over the years, a very conservative approach to the estimates that we're using, the assumptions. And that has played well in terms of modeling what has happened out there in reality, but also has put us in footing that we're very confident moving forward that there's adequate financing to continue this process. The DIF model, it's built up, as I mentioned, parcel by parcel, and it's updated each year. We work very closely with the city assessor doing this. And we use assessment values, or factors, as we call them, for commercial and office uses on a dollar-per-square-foot basis, condominiums, apartments, hotel keys, and so on, which are then inflated over time. The new development can be turned on and off, and it's a very flexible model and a relatively easy model, so that if a new idea comes along, a new project, a new development concept comes along, we can very quickly analyze what the impacts of that new investment, that new private investment is going to have upon not only the tax revenues, but also on the overall financial structure of the city. We also are careful in that when a new development takes place, that we remove the base value underneath that so that we don't double count what's there originally. And going back to that first slide that I had, just remember, that base value of what's there and what was there in 2006 remains the same. So, and it gets inflated up each year. So the general fund essentially continues to get that revenue and the inflated revenue coming off that base value regardless, and that does not flow into the DIF funding. The DIF is just the new increment, the new investment being made. I mentioned the long-term inflated historical inflation rate among assessments has been fairly consistently 3% every reassessment cycle, which is every three years. I believe that's going to start changing here in the near future, particularly as the market has taken off. I think we're going to see higher assessed values as the market starts to reflect that, and that will eventually be reflected in the new values that go into the model. Again, we're basing ourselves on very conservative estimates, using that 1%. So what we forecast for the future, assessed value from which the revenue flows, is probably going to be lower than what it actually will be at that point in time. We then use a bond calculation model to look at the potential revenue that can support the levels of DIF bonding for that. And I won't bore you with the entire model. This is just one piece of one of the tables in it. There's about 30-plus-or-minus tables to the model, and you can, it's hard to read that. But over on the left-hand side is what we have, is every parcel in the DIF area that we can then look at and describe what goes in there, when it goes in there, how much it's going to be valued at, and then what the revenue that's going to be generated from that is going to be. Looking back, this question was asked in terms of how have we done so far? This is looking at just some selected years. I didn't want a table, I want a table you could read, that looks at the total tax revenues coming off of the DIF district, which you can see started in the base year, it was about $6 million a year. That's now about $12 million a year in the last fiscal year. The new DIF revenue, again, it started at zero, we're just talking about the increment, is now about $5.4 million and rising each year as new investment comes on and as values rise. And the remaining base level that's there that continues to flow into the general fund in this year is going to be about $6.5 million. The DIF expenditures, which is what the money's being spent for the debt service on the DIF bonding that we're describing tonight, you see it's, again, select years in there. And you'll notice in the first few years, in 2012, 2016, there are very low numbers. That is because of Quincy's very unique opportunity to borrow money at very low interest rates under bond anticipation notes for up to 10 years. Most communities, most cities in the Commonwealth are limited to two or three years of bands before the full bond and the debt service and the full bonds kick in. This has been very, very useful in the early years when the investment was needed to jump-start downtown. And now you can see in the later years, the full debt service on the other, the other three bonds are starting to kick in very slowly. And right now, there's a surplus, annual surplus in the DIF revenue between the DIF earmarked revenue that comes in and the debt service that goes out, and that's totaled about $30 million since the beginning. This graph shows you just how much the base assessed values have grown since the base year in 2006 and differentiates it between the residential in blue and the commercial assessed values in orange. Residential assessments have gone up 351% since the beginning. The commercial is up about 127% from 2006 to fiscal year '22. Residential accounts, it was, as you can look by the graph, back in 2006, it represented about 25% of the assessed value in downtown Quincy or within the DIF district. Now it's about 50/50. And I think it's important to point out that it's the residential, it's the beds, it's the apartments, the condos, that are really activating the commercial spaces in downtown, the new restaurants, the retail space, and the new employment that's taken place. It's the, these new, what we call rooftops, which are really starting to activate that space. And the new commercial growth that has come on and will continue to come on, it also results in new employment and new local spending as people spend some of their money within the downtown area. Again, I always say pictures work a lot better than words sometimes, and this shows you, starting from fiscal year '22 that we're in now and projecting it forward, the blue line is the projected future DIF revenues. The orange line is the existing debt service on the three bands, or the three bonds that are out there now. The red line is the addition of this DIF 4 bond going out in the future. And as you can see, the revenues always exceed the debt service and continue that way into the future. This next slide looks at it in total, and we've added up, looking at the model, the remaining increment in terms of new assessed value, DIF value that's coming in, in terms of property tax revenue, new invested incremental property tax revenues, about $270 million. The total debt service before this DIF 4 is projected to be 135, leaving about another $135 million of capacity, of additional capacity within debt revenue to have available. This DIF 4, over the timeframe up through the end of the DIF period, which is 2036, will take about $30 million of that, leaving a residual remaining capacity of a little bit over $100 million of spending capacity left in this. Important to point out, this is just property tax revenues. This does not include other revenues such as proceeds from the sale of city properties, which is an eligible DIF revenue, any taxes that are generated from private parking garages, because we're just looking at the commercial space and the residential space sources, or any likely increases in other property values within the downtown as a result of the new investments going in. And it also doesn't include other funding sources, as Rob pointed out, iQub, MassWorks, and other state and federal appropriations, which has been a significant part of the overall investment picture for the downtown. It also does not include personal property tax and on the commercial space, particularly with any medical space, it may be coming on, that could be another very important source of taxes. So lastly, I'll conclude and get to your questions here. Downtown Quincy continues to what I call gain traction, both from a market perspective as well as from a financial footing perspective. And I have to say, much of that is thanks to, not only this council and previous councils' continued support for the downtown investment program, but also for responsible planning and spending on the part of the city. The planning, the vision, creating that vision, managing that planning process, and then managing its development law has been a key factor in leading to the success of the existing projects, the recent projects, all of which are now attracting new investors to follow them in. And I think the infrastructure that we're talking about here is just about, is getting in a place to maximize not only the immediate development, but also future development as well. These public investments have been very successful in leveraging, leveraging private monies, that huge amount of private money coming in to build these buildings and to bring employees and residents in. And I think a simple way of looking at that is the city has been able to truly raise the tide, not only within downtown Quincy, but more importantly, I think, looking at the city as a whole. The success of downtown as a result of this has also brought up values, brought up attractiveness, made Quincy, across the city, all products, you know, they've made them more successful or better off than otherwise they would have been. And lastly, there is additional capacity exists, well, you know, significant additional capacity exists to complete this transformation of the downtown. And summarize what was said in the very, very beginning of this, of this whole process, is that the downtown redevelopment is paying for itself and it's continuing to do so. Mr. Chairman.
That concludes your presentation. Thanks. Okay.
Counselor, for questions...
Counselor, for questions, we have everyone here for questions. Counsel Pomochi and Counsel Yang next.
Thank you.
Rob, if I could ask you some questions. I was trying to find, I was going through the old URDP amendments, just to, I like to look back and see what we said we were trying to do, and then compare it to what we actually did. It's, it's an interesting exercise to help determine, I don't want to say the credibility, but the reliability, I suppose, about what we're being told now. You know, you look to past results for future prediction, right? But I just had a couple of questions about the material you presented, which I can't find now. Hold on a second. So, the new courthouse, we know it's a priority, number one priority allegedly on the, on the trial court's list, although I think the Springfield Court, which had to be evacuated because of mold and people are protesting going back, I think that probably jumped Quincy in the, on the list, but we know that it's been identified that it needs to be rebuilt. Do we do, have we done any placemaking for that in the Quincy Center District at all?
Placemaking, no, not yet. I would characterize, you know, our touch in the planning department is prior to the COVID pandemic, I believe the DCAM went out and hired a site consultant, and there was an initial conversation, but then we did not hear from that group until earlier this year, I think about a month or two ago, they reached back out. So, they're just at, you know, analyzing the site. They have indicated they want to move to more of a justice center format, you know, bringing some more product in, but we spent, myself and the planning director, quite a bit of time letting them know that, you know, that garage is servicing a number of private investments as well as public parking.
Yeah, it can't fit them. That garage can't fit them generally, right?
Exactly.
I mean, it's 40%, it's 40% already taken by private interests. There's only 60% that's available to the public. The other 40% are leased out spaces for, for the residential that's yet, so you're talking only, and what is it, 500? About 500 spaces?
Total, or?
Yeah, how many spaces are in there?
It's over 700 total.
700, okay.
Yeah, you're generally, you know, correct.
Right, so.
I go about a third to two-thirds, but 60, 40 is about there.
I just, I don't know, frustrating with DCAM, it's not, it's not the city, I know you guys have worked, I know the mayor's office has tried on a number of occasions. I know when that self-storage facility went in at the Home Depot, right next to the train station, I think we, this, we, the city, kind of put it to them like, hey, the Home Depot's selling a big chunk of land directly abutting at MBTA station right off the highway. We know you're looking for a new site, same with Lowe's, when the Lowe's shut down, we had told them that that's a great site if they want to look at that, and there was just no movement. So, what I find troubling in general, and not from our perspect, you know, not the city's fault, is that we're going to be done with the downtown redevelopment in terms of placemaking. Everything's going to have a place and projects may, you know, still be yet to, to break ground, but there's going to be plans and people have spent money, and then they're going to, and then they're going to come to us and say, well, where do we fit in with this? Right, because I don't, unless they go up, I, I don't see how they could fit on that footprint. I mean, with, and with parking, I just, it's, it's tough. So, so we, so we've taken the approach of, we're moving ahead with our plans, we've tried to reach out to them, we've tried to, to work them in, they're moving at their own pace, we're not going to slow down and wait for them essentially, right? Yeah. Okay, fair enough. Very disappointing that that's the way it's going. Again, not, not what we're doing is not disappointing. So, the big question I have about this request, how much, how much is in there relative to, how much of the bond authorization is relative to the new garage? Just off the top of your head, I don't need a.
Well, for constructing the garage, nothing.
Right, but design, right?
Design, correct.
So, before we start spending money on a design, well, strike that. Do we need to figure out how big the garage is before we start spending money on a design?
Well, that's a number we're still working on, on how big that is.
First of all, you're jumping ahead. It's a yes or no question, so the answer is clearly yes. Now, tell me, why don't we have a number, right? I said, do you need to know the number of spaces before you design a garage?
Yeah.
Right, okay, so now tell me, we don't know the number of spaces, and we're being asked to vote on money to design a garage, so tell me how, how that jives.
Well, there, it, we've stating that there is a need for a second garage. We know that. The number of spaces is at least 1,000 spaces. As how high we could go is, we're looking at a number as high as 1,500 spaces. We've spent work on some of the engineering and, you know, because there's the train tracks right next there, we could, Paul Harrell Bridge just constructed the general bridge. So, there's a lot of site analysis that has gone on. We're trying to fit a parking plate into an area that gets us the most amount of spaces per plate, you know, to watch the height of that garage. We've also got General McConville Way, where we don't want a garage fronting on that street. You know, there'll be entrances and exits, but, you know, we're looking to front McConville with additional development sites once we square away exactly, you know, how many or how big this garage needs to be.
So, I guess what my concern is, is that we don't know how many spaces yet. And part of the reason I think we don't know is because we don't know what people are going to build, right?
And how much they could fit onto their own site.
Right. What is, does the URDP specify a requirement as to what they have to self-park? Or is there language in there that just says, available parking either in a public garage or private?
Yeah, well, there's, there's minimum parking thresholds that every project needs to meet. Now, whether they can meet all of that on-site, or whether they need the ability to access spaces within a city garage, that's the flexibility and the beauty we have with the Urban Renewal Plan, is it gives us that flexibility to negotiate at each stage what the real parking demand is. I think unlocking the switch point development at Fox Rock North was a big, a big thing to occur. That just happened this past February. Obviously, we've, planning boards permitted the R3 development site, so now there is some additional development sites that are being contemplated that I believe are in negotiations. Mr. Walker, Mr. Gary would be able to comment on those specifically, but there are parking discussions on the needs from those developments that would all contribute to what Ross Garage needs to be.
So, the price that, do we have a report from Desmond? We usually, the past several times we've been asked to vote on anything related to, this is on the Hancock Lot related to the garage, we had a report from Desmond in terms of need and cost. Is there an updated report from Desmond?
Not far enough along for this body. There is analysis, Desmond's still under contract. They've done a lot of the site engineering and then, you know, developing alternative floor plates on, you know, what could be built, or how many, I think if you guys recall with the Hancock Lot, there was a number of different configurations, you know, so they've done some initial work to that effect, to give us a sense of, you know, what it's going to be, hence, you know, we did provide a graphic, but that's, that's as far, we don't have an official Desmond report.
Okay.
I believe that would be the next step.
Okay, I have another couple of questions for you, but, Mr. Walker, is this something that the administration is looking to have voted on forthwith?
We would hope to have.
I mean, just timing wise, are you?
Before the end of the, the, next week, yeah.
Okay. Before the end of next week, yeah, okay. So, that, I would defy that as forthwith. All right. Okay, so, a little troubling that in, in times past, whenever we voted on funding for parking, there was a report that along, went along with it. We're being asked for funding now, but you're not far along enough to have generated the report to support the funding request. At the last time we got a report from them, and this was before COVID and supply chains and lots of other things that I don't understand that makes everything more expensive, the cost was between $26,000 and I think $46,000 per space, right? So, so if you split the difference and call it $36,000 per space, per parking space, that would be a $54 million garage. Is that roughly the number that you guys are playing around with? I shouldn't say playing around, that you guys are speculating internally?
Yeah, I mean, it's not far off. I would go off our experience constructing the Hancock Lot, which the garage itself was probably just over 40. Overall, I mean, that number was 50, beyond 50 with all of the infrastructure and roadways, but yeah, that was 700 and we were around 40. You know, if you're 50, that is, seems to be, you know, close to the order of magnitude that's being contemplated. One of the urban design efforts, obviously the Hancock Lot was sort of in a neighborhood and with residential planned for that area, so the garage, you know, we spent a little extra money making the garage, you know, blend in. I think one of the benefits of citing that along the train tracks is, you know, hopefully it'll be more of the utilitarian look.
Right.
You know, save a little extra there.
We don't know, we don't know what Fox Rocks, Fox Rock is doing on the entirety of that Ross Lot parcel yet, right?
South of essentially the new General's Bridge, I'm, I'm not aware.
So, you're dividing it into two sections?
Yeah, I'll call the Fox Rock North parcel, subject to that LDA.
North is the one that's closer to the General's Bridge?
Correct, yeah, that would be the medical office, lab space, their own parking garage, and then the commercial retail at the north end at Granite Street.
I thought I understood what you were saying, now, now I'm confused, that's the other one. Right, are you calling that one parcel?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so. So, we don't know what their, I mean, they've, I don't know, the last time I've heard anything from them, it was that they were going to build spec medical office space. They're going to build medical office space on spec, right? The hotel is out, retail is out.
Retail's in.
Retail's back in.
Retail's been in. Residential's out.
Residential's out. Hotel's out. So, we don't know what they're doing with that other half of the parcel where they had it, they had it designated as hotel and residential, right?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. No, that we, that whole parcel is spoken for at the moment. It's expanded the retail, included the new parking garage, counselor, and expanded the commercial building. What is not settled at the moment is south of the bridge, that will be part of the process relative to, and that's where we are at this point in time, is figuring out how a new garage we've.
You guys keep saying north and south, and yet every time I look at one of these maps, there's no north and south.
South is north, on these maps.
So, when you're saying this is south, this way?
Correct.
Okay. Can, can, Rob, do you have capability to bring up a slide?
Yeah, I'll go.
Can you go to page 14? Okay, so I'm seeing this.
So, this is the DIF III slide, yes.
Right, so there's two parcels there, right? There's the triangle piece, and then there's the bigger piece down below.
So, at the time of DIF III, we did not know what the Fox Rock project would ultimately be.
Right, but you see the triangle?
I do see that triangle.
Okay, so the triangle was, minusing was always where they were going to put the residential.
Correct.
Right, so we know they're not doing residential, so what, do we have any idea what's going in the triangle?
Yes, so they, I would say, coming off of Granite Street, they did some enhanced public space improvements, but prior to the, you know, the bottom of the, of the triangle, they have a two-story commercial structure there.
So, there's a two-story commercial structure going in on the triangle?
Yeah, so this, this was an estimate, and I would just refer back to your DIF IV slide. I know that's a little bit further away, but see how you got sort of dark brown on that, that's on slide page seven?
Yeah.
So, that's a little bit more of an accurate representation of the building footprint. So, you got the medical office abutting, general, the General's Bridge, then you got the garage in the middle with retail out front, and then they have a two-story commercial building at the point, so to speak, on Granite Street. So, what once was a residential is now two-story commercial at that location.
And, and we think that's the best and highest use of that parcel?
That's what they came forward with.
All right, and so, what, how much, how much square footage are they doing for medical office space?
240,000 square feet is the gross square feet.
Of the total project or just the MOB?
Of just the MOB piece.
Okay. All right, I, I just, I find it super concerning that we're talking about funding a garage to support Fox Rock, who for the last five years has done nothing but changed their plans like the weather. And we're going to spend, you know, taxpayer money to build a garage. I, I wouldn't, I gotta be honest, I, I'm not, I don't know that I'm comfortable spending a penny before they start building something already. And I get it, they're building things around here, they built on Hospital Hill, they haven't built any, they haven't done anything significant in the downtown, anything at all, really. Before we even know what's going there, I don't know how we can contemplate a garage.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Counsel Pomochi. What is currently planned for that end of the lot with the two-and-a-half story of, of residential on the thinnest narrow portion? That, the parking garage, and the 240,000 square foot MOB, it is permanent. There is plans that you can, you know, it's, we've, we've basically got a sense of everything that's going in that site. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, yep, that's, that's helpful.
So, when I say what we're, what we're really looking at is a, a pretty sound understanding of what they're going to do at this time, no different, no, no, it, it's not really us to say, you know, what they should do is highest and best use, I just want to make sure you're clear.
Well, it is up to us for highest and best use, because we wouldn't have.
No, I'm, I'm saying it's not up to the planning department, it's not up to, the city, they own the land, okay? They've made proposals and recommendations as to what they want to do. Yes, they've changed it dramatically, and I don't disagree. All I'm saying is, the actual garage, the number of spaces, we believe is 514.
Their garage?
Their garage. Their 240,000 square feet of office, and we have a, I guess, a number that represents what they plan to do on the retail site, and so we can give you more detail on that particular piece. That's, that's all I wanted to say, that's, I answered what you're asking.
Yeah, no, no, that, that makes sense, I, I appreciate that, because that was my concern, is that we don't, I, I, I have a hard enough time following city council meetings, I don't, I don't keep up with the planning board meetings. I know that they had gone in for permitting, but I didn't know it was the fight, the full, the full Monty.
Let me say, we know what their, what their intention is, and that's what we've been working with.
Okay.
So, you know. Mr. Walker?
I was satisfied with the answer, but by all means.
Through you, no, I'm not, I'm not amplifying on what Mr. Fassi has just said, I just wanted to be clear relative to the parking structure. There's very little, if any, money in this request for that new parking structure. We fully anticipated, as we have been, that that parking structure, which includes the heavy end design, will be federally state funded. That's the goal right now. We've done some initial work through DIF III, probably less than we would have wanted to because of the changing scope of what that area on that side of the bridge wants to be, wants to look like, the changing nature of that, but I, it wasn't unclear to me, but it, it could be perceived as unclear that there's a request in this DIF request for a parking structure, and there's not.
Yeah, no, I know it's not for the parking structure, but it's in support of the parking structure, but I appreciate your comments relative to the funding, that you're seeking the bulk of the funding federally. seeking the bulk of the funding federally and state, so I'll move on from that, then, thank you. Page seven, uh, talks about, um, acquisition of parcels, and it notes the, can you go to the, I wish I had a laser pointer, but can you go to page seven there? Alright, so the, the purple building, furthest on the left?
Yep.
What is that? Like, what is, what is that actual building now?
That is a one-nineteen, uh, parking way, it's a breakfast place.
That's the IHOP?
Correct.
Okay, and so, that red mark, a red designation, I don't know if it's red, whatever it is, that, uh, maroon designation says prop, uh, proposed city taking, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then this, there's three other properties that are proposed city takings?
Correct.
On here, okay. And so we've been presented with three authorizations for city takings. Following me?
Yep.
Yeah, so the, so we have not been asked to take the IHOP building formally by the administration, there's no pending order before us for a city taking of that.
Okay.
So are we funding the taking of that in this diff authorization?
That is what's being requested, correct.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, we at this point do not envision eminent domain taking, which would trigger the takings orders before you, the, the orders before you are eminent domain, those are all related to urban redevelopment, eminent domain, uh, uses, and those why, that's why those are taking orders. At this point, we're very early in the process, um, with the owners of that parcel, um, we do anticipate that to be a negotiated sale without the need for eminent domain, if there is eminent domain, we would obviously be back before this body with, uh, the appropriate orders.
So essentially, you've earmarked what, what you likely would have, or either way, fair market value, you've earmarked fair market value for that one particular parcel of the four, the other three came in with, the funding requests for all four is in this, the other three you came in with specific orders, but not for this one, because you don't, you wanna negotiate it rather than, okay. That makes sense to me, I mean, I think, that makes very good sense to me, because that's the only parcel of those four that's owned by one of our development partners. And I know it's been designated, it, it's sort of always bothered me that it was designated for taking, because I feel like if we're gonna, I mean, take the properties of the burnt-out building, where people aren't on board, they aren't doing anything, and they've been given every opportunity, but when it comes to folks who are actually building downtown, who have a commitment to working with the city, um, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be taking their property, so I'm glad to hear that we're gonna do, um, uh, negotiated, um, sale of that parcel. Uh, that's it, that's all I have at this point, thank you, Rob, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Waterman.
Thank you. Um, good evening, team, I just wanna start by saying that, um, I appreciate how much work you all put into all of this information in front of us, um, you all, there's, there's a combination of teams here in front of us, right, and you all do this every single day, on top of other things that are going on, but you see this day in and day out, right, so then, knowing that you have to come in front of us to say, okay, we need to compile all this information, put it together succinctly, right, do a presentation, do the PowerPoint, like, we need to have all of it in a presentable fashion when it all lives up here, um, I know that takes a lot, so I just wanna start by saying thank you, right, because it's not an easy feat, um, so, thank you for putting this all together, thank you for putting it in front of us. Um, to that end, I just, I have a list of questions, um, that I had jotted down just sort of as we were going through this, so if it jumps around a little bit, I apologize, I'm going to try to be as organized as possible in sort of my train of thought here, um, so the first is for the, one of the things that, um, I, I saw that I thought was great, right, was actually in the binder about the diff capacity and how much, um, we're expected with a surplus, so it says here on one of the pages for the diff that there's going to be a surplus of about a hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars, so, I'm just curious, right, and Craig, thank you for, uh, reiterating the, uh, the graphic that explains how the diff works and how the increment of financing works, um, so this question might be to you, I'm not sure if it's to you or to Eric, but, you know, we take the interest from the increment, um, appraised values, right, and we take then the tax dollars that we put onto that to pay back the diff or pay down the diff, right? If there is monies in excess, can we not, like anything else, right, if you have a loan or, or whatnot, you could pay more, right, than what is owed in any one payment to help pay down the principal, can we not do that here as well?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the answer, counselor, is yes. The surplus diff funds is at the city's, uh, you know, whatever the city wants to do with it, whether it flows back into the general fund, whether it's used to reduce, uh, the debt in faster, pay it off quicker, yes, that's, the answer is, the simple answer is yes.
Simple answer is yes, so my follow-up to that then is, have we and can we, because I feel like, and again, this might be to Eric, I see him already, he's already prepared, he's standing behind you already, um, I feel like this is six of one, half a dozen of the other, right, as long as we have to use the, it's, the benefit overall is that with the increased development, right, the taxes from that should help to, you know, contribute to the tax base that residents and, and property owners, commercial and residential, right, are paying for, that's great, right, but we're not gonna feel that benefit if that money's going to paying down the diff, which it is meant to do, right? Now, as long as we have to keep paying down the diff, we're not seeing the ta, the tax monies come into the general fund, right? And so, wouldn't we wanna pay that down faster so that we can see the benefits from that faster?
Through you, Chairman, uh, counselor, uh, it's actually going into the general fund.
It is, okay.
Yeah, so any excess revenue goes into fund two hun, oh-two-hundred, which is a general fund, and that flows back into, uh, fund oh-one-hundred, which is a general fund, and those surpluses are reused each year to reduce taxes, it becomes part of the levy itself.
So it does already benefit?
Yes, and to speak on accelerated funding schedules, that's absolutely possible, um, a lot of our debt right now that's in the long term, um, is currently non-callable, so when you.
Non-what?
Non-callable.
Non-callable?
Yes, so, um, in public finance, usually the first ten years of any bond are non-callable, meaning, um, we cannot refund the debt, and that's done because, uh, predominant, the predominant purchaser of municipal bonds is insurance companies, and they demand a fixed income.
Ah, insurance companies, okay.
And you need that for the first ten years, otherwise you'd have no buyers, and that would drive up, um, the interest rate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's done in every community, that's not QG-specific, and it's, it's a product of the market, so it's not something we can really alter, uh, but the structuring is correct, we can accelerate payments, but there are certain nuances to how those, how that debt vehicle's structured, that creates, uh, unique funding characteristics.
Okay, so have we, so we haven't started doing that yet, right, we've been using the excess to, um, go into the general fund to help offset, not offset, to bring down the taxes.
Uh, correct, and, uh, we, we have done, um, some refinancing when it's been available to do, we have some bonds that are, only have five-year non-callabilities, as we have refinanced those as rates went down, um, but otherwise than that, it's, we haven't used it for accelerated debt repayment.
So is it worth it then to, I, I wanna find the best solution to help the taxpayers, right, our, ourselves included, um, so, wouldn't it be better to, instead of putting it back into the general fund, use it to continue to pay down the, the principal?
I would respectfully disagree with that, because a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow, and once it becomes bonded, that's a fixed payment, so dollars become worth less over time, but the payment stays fixed, so if we have to pay twenty years from now five-hundred-thousand dollars, that's a lot cheaper five-hundred-thousand dollars to pay because of inflation than paying five-hundred-thousand dollars today, so you get a higher return on the dollar using it today to lower taxes, or invest in capital, do any myriad of options with it, um, that's certainly an opinion, um, I would, no, so I would respectfully submit that.
Okay. Okay, I, I'm still a little bit like, I feel like if I have this massive debt and I can pay the interest down faster, I wanna get it off the books as quickly as possible, um, so, you have a lot more experience in that finance field answering that question, so I appreciate that, um, I'm just letting you know that I'm sort of leaving that conversation piece with a little discomfort here, knowing that if we have the option to pay down the principal, I think, I, I'm just saying, like, I, I wanna sort of leave this conversation open, right, to continue to explore, because, uh, again, it, it's, if I have debt, I wanna get rid of it as quickly as possible, right? Um, I come from a generation of folks that hide the money under the mattress, we don't like credit cards, right, let's get rid of debt, so I, I just would like to continue this conversation, I think.
Absolutely.
Moving forward, um, the next question I have is, so, what's the process for bidding the estimates that we have here in front of us? I don't know who would answer that, but. Thank you. Craig, thank you.
Okay, um, so the cost estimates contained in the, uh, fourth diff request, uh, we work with Woodard and Curran, uh, in the Crucial Group, and a lot of it is based on experience, uh, we work with the DPW, getting most recent bids, uh, you know, and then, you know, they go through a process of doing the cost estimates, uh, for what we anticipate, uh, those expenses would be.
Okay, so these are folks that have obviously clearly done the work already, I mean, again, Woodard and Curran's done plenty of work here at DPW, I, I appreciate that you looped in DPW to this work as well, um, and I do see also, and this ties back to the question I just asked Eric and, um, and Craig, right, so, you know, I, I notice in here that you do have a breakout, I think it was in the binder, of contingencies that you have in here, and so, same question, right, so for the contingencies, if we don't use any percentage of that, does that get lumped into then the overage that was back into the general fund, or do we have to use the overage, or the, the monies that are not used for the contingencies that are built into the request, right, what happens to the excess of that if we don't dip into any contingencies?
Yeah.
So, um, how sequencing works when we do large borrowing like this is, uh.
You're gonna have to speak up, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, how sequencing works, I'm a little too lengthy.
Cause you're tall, just switch the mic.
It's tall, miserable.
Yeah.
So how it works with borrowing, in that, we actually first, when debt, when we set up one of these capital plans, is internal borrowing that occurs, so in between the time when the body authorizes the usage of these funds, and the funds, um, go to market, there's an, an intermediate period, we go to the market about three times a year, so we use internal borrowing, in other words, we have enough liquidity that we pay these bills, and that account be, and that becomes deficit, now when we go to market, we can only, uh, we only go to market for what we've spent.
Mm-hmm.
And what we, we plan on using, maybe the next six months after we go to market, um, so we would only borrow enough to cover that, so say, for example, there's a ten percent contingency among that fifty-three million, uh, we don't, we'd only go to market for forty-eight million, and that remaining five million would eventually expire on the authorization, and we wouldn't have five million dollars of debt service we need to pay, that would lower that projected debt service and allow more of that revenue to fall into the general fund.
Wait, so we're, we have enough to start paying for some of the work already?
No, no, we don't have funds authorized to pay it, but there's enough cash in the bank that once the authorization becomes valid, we can practice something that's called internal borrowing, that's what the DOA, the, uh, sorry, the BOA, the Bureau of Accounts for the State refers to it as.
Where does that cash currently live, and what account?
It lives in the, it's a cash balance account, it's, uh, like treasury holdings at that banks.
And is there, like, and that only applies to the work that we're doing right now on the diff, or does that apply to everything we do here across the city?
No, it applies to everything.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that applies to everything, we have a little over twelve-hundred funds in the city, but we only have about thirty-seven back accounts.
Okay. Okay, um, the next question I have is for, um, oh, the breakout stuff, I think Rob, this goes back to you, I apologize, this is, again, I, I'm a little bit all over the ways here, so, I'm giving you all your exercise for the night, so for the breakdown of, um, the categories, I don't see communications in here, I assume that falls under operations, but if I can get some clarification, it's, it's communications to residents, um, about what's going on in the surrounding areas, but, um, as you all know, right, communications to local business owners is really important to me, and so, is there a plan for communications, and if so, what category would that be under? If there isn't one, um, I would respectfully ask that we create a communications plan, um, with, again, interpretations and ADA compliance, um, included in that.
Yeah, yeah, the communications is, is handled out of the mayor's office, but, uh, there is, uh, a budget in there under the consultant services.
So in consulting, there is, uh, the budget amount for comms, so that includes, obviously, again, like, if we need to bring in folks for meetings, and there needs to be, um, cart services, if there's interpretation services, translation services, printing, right, like, all of it's being covered under that, and so that's, you said it's going through the mayor's office, or is it going through all of you, so when this, when this starts moving, right, and, and, you know, there are community meetings, and notices going out to residents and whatnot, who manages the actual execution of that then?
A lot of times it does fall to the planning department, but we work closely with the mayor's office.
But that line item then, or however much is budgeted, it would go to both? It would get paid out to both, or, like, I, do you know, I'm just trying to figure out, like.
It's available to both, but, you know, we usually let the mayor's office take the lead on communications.
Hey, Chris.
Through you, um, we're not separate entities, counselor, the planning department is the mayor's office, the mayor's office is the planning department, we work together on this stuff, we hire consultants for it, we hire outside experts, um, to help us with a lot of this stuff, there's sort of parallel tracks, there's general communication, and then when we get hot and heavy on construction, there is that stuff that you are exactly talking about, the real heavy-duty, making sure everybody down there knows exactly what's going on on a daily basis, that they have a point of contact, that they can call, um, that they can email, that they can write to, that they know exactly what's going on on a daily basis, when the water's gonna be shut off, when the road's gonna shut down, um, we're in a little bit of an interim phase right now, there's not a ton, uh, implicating existing businesses right this second, uh, but that time is shortly coming up, so we know full well that we're gonna be implementing a full-throated, uh, communication plan as we did previously, um, and thus the money in the, in the budget for it.
Okay, great, um, I don't know if folks are sort of planning, uh, long-term for a comms plan, like, oh, okay, we have this, you know, timeline with, like, all of these benchmarks along the way, so with this one benchmark met, we need to get, you know, something posted on the city website, an email to the councilors so that they can share with constituents, or a newsletter will be sent out, or, you know, who are we sending it to, you didn't say, like, is there, is there someone that can, can show us or show me, like, I, I would just love to, you know what I mean, like, I would love to make sure that we're hitting all of those points, because sometimes things come up that you don't know about, right, and, but if you have a plan that you're working from, then you're not putting out this fire and then forgetting this major communication that needs to go out, right, so if we can get from either office just, uh, a sort of, at least a starting point timeline of like, okay, what work has to get done, and then how are we communicating that, that would be really helpful to us as well, to know when we can, you know, I know a lot of councilors send out newsletters, we can incorporate that into our newsletters as well, if you're posting on social media, we can get that on our social media, obviously, I see, you know, the Quincy Sun here, the Quincy Sun can know when communications are coming out, they can plan for it in their additions, right, so, a comms plan would be great, if we could get a, a starting, working comms plan that obviously is a living document, just to have something to work off of, um, and I'm looking to both of you, okay, thank you, um, let me just go through my notes, alright, the next one I have here is, so the breakout for the, um, for the staff, cause there is that consultant line, right, and then legals and operations, if we can get a breakout of, and I know Council Mahoney's always asking for this, I know, you can cross that one off your list, um, the breakout of, of the staff, and then estimated, uh, you know, how long are they gonna be with us, is it just for the duration of the downtown work, or is it going to be like a long-term position that's created, a breakout, a breakout of that would be helpful, um, as well, and I see you.
Yeah, through you, we are not, uh, based upon discussions with the councils, including any, uh, further city employees, any new city employees, uh, in this budget.
Okay.
Uh, based upon discussion with this body.
Okay.
The existing employee, um, will stay, and, and that's it, and I believe there's, there's a half of another employee that will stay that's already been discussed with this council.
Okay, so any, any staff then in these categories for consultant, legal, and operations, they're just for the duration of?
They're not, well, they're not staff, that, these are.
Or peoples, peoples that are working and getting paid, whatever you wanna call it.
I mean, it's.
Consultants?
Yeah, these are consultants.
So consultants, but no, what I'm saying, so, so consultants under the consultant category, and under legal and operations, I'm, I'm essentially just asking for a breakout of that. Okay. Thank you, and then the other one is, oh, so the grant opportunities, love that we've gotten about sixty-eight million in state and federal grants, congratulations, I know that, again, grant rating takes a lot of work as well, um, could we also, um, get just a, a breakout of what we're expecting to moving forward, I know that you're probably looking to apply for the grants, that doesn't mean that you'll get all of those grants, but that also, I think, is helpful to see, okay, well, you're looking for a number here, but then you're also looking for a number of grants, and that, I think, put together would give us a, a bigger picture of the full cost of what we're looking to do here, so if you already have some grant applications in mind that you'd like to pull in some dollars for, um, or to account for in your planning, again, that would just be helpful for me to see, so then I can look and say, okay, it's the monies that you're looking for through the diff request, but then it's also these monies you're looking to get from grant processes, this is the full, you know, financial cost of this moving forward, right, so, that, if you have an idea of that, a general estimate, that would be really helpful just to get in front of us as well, um, and then, the other thing I was wondering is for, um, and this is why I prefaced the conversation, I think, with saying, like, thank you for your work and putting all this together, I'm wondering if it's possible, because it was really helpful, um, in your PowerPoint to, you know, when you had the summary of each of the, the diff requests and the different categories, if we could just get one summary of all of the diff funds that have been requested to date, and, you know, then a chunk of that would be the grants, right, and then a breakout of the categories of how all of that money in total has been spent, does that make sense, so instead of having it, like.
In the totality?
Yeah.
But.
Would that be possible? I know, you're giving me a weird look.
I've appeared before this board to give the update on the original, you know, diff request and diff two. This was the third diff. You're looking to go back, you know, over 10 years and, and review? Okay.
And this, I don't, this could be, I know Susan's not here, but I don't know if this is a Susan request or I just, I would just want to, for myself, right? Just have a full picture of everything we've requested and then what's been spent to date.
Not a problem.
Including grants.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry, I'll follow up with Susan and come back to you on it. All right, the last thing is a couple of questions. These all come back to the timeline, right? And timeline meaning, you know, who's coming into what, right? When certain buildings are coming down, when buildings are going up. And I, between the parcels, the Quincy Center T station and the stickler for me, right, the Ross lot. I mean, I, I think, you know, and I do try to speak in I statements, but I think, you know, we all, yourselves included, right? Like, we all had this plan for something to happen at the Ross lot and it just hasn't happened yet. And, you know, I remember having conversations with folks with saying like, okay, they are presenting all these iterations to us. And my question was like, that's great. Do you have an MOA? Do you have something, you know, even on the back of a napkin that says, yes, this is what we're going to do? Because if they don't have that agreement, but they're showing us this and they're showing you all, like, you can't plan, right? Unless you know what these developers are doing, like parking garage, like Council Mahoney was saying is one example of that. And I almost feel like, you know, we're, we're all, you all especially, are putting in all of this work to create this master plan. And every single thing that's a part of it impacts one another, right? So you're putting in all this work and then I almost feel like you're sort of held hostage with these developers who are constantly changing what they're doing because that impacts everything you're doing, right? So you put in hundreds of hours of work to plan certain things based off of, you know, I think it was a million square feet of commercial space. And so you're like, that's great. Let's put in the work to plan around that. And then it changes and then you have to change your plan again, right? So I, if you are frustrated, if I share that frustration and, and is it possible? I guess my question is to you is for the Ross lot, for these future developments, you know, isn't there any, for even the parking garage? Isn't there any way that we can say, this is what we want, this is what we're looking for? And if you can work your plans into it, we need to see an MOA of some sort. I get it, things change, right? Pandemics happen, wild things happen, right? And so things change. But if at least we have something in writing, I feel it would, you know, better help all of us to plan. It would help residents to plan to say, I'm going to keep my house because I see what's coming down the pike. I see a million square foot of commercial space coming down the pike. I'm going to keep my property. It'll help small business owners plan. It'll help us plan up here financially and just overall, right? I feel like we are all, the entire city, yourselves again included, are putting in so much to plan around these things. And if developers are the people that we're held at the mercy of, you know, I, I just, I feel frustrated. So I don't know what our process is. I do respect the fact that there are, you know, legally conversations that have to, you know, be held privately. I would just ask for, I don't know, just a consideration or a very serious conversation in any case about what we can do to try to get something like an MOA, an MOA itself, or, you know, something, something that is relatively binding to just help us continue to move forward with planning, right? Because even with the garage, I mean, look, you're, you're already looking to plan and finance this garage. That's great. I appreciate that you're looking ahead, right? But then why is it that you should have to then change your plans again should some developer decide to do something differently? Or frankly, wait five years to then still not produce something, right? I just, I don't know, there were like three different questions here that I had about, okay, what's the timeline for Quincy Center? What's the timeline for these projects? What's the timeline for Fox Rock? And really, all of it just comes to this, this one question of can we explore something that resembles an MOA so that we all can just get on with our planning? Is it possible?
Memorandum of agreement with, with whom?
With Fox Rock, with like, okay, they're going to do...
You know, I'd defer to, you know, Bill and Mr. Walker of the mayor's office. That's sort of the negotiations that occur. I think from my perspective, the, you know, the public funding has to come upfront. We're doing the infrastructure. It's old, it's aged, it needs to be updated. And I think, you know, one of the struggles we have is it's, in a lot of ways, it's, it's like doing open-heart surgery on a patient running the marathon, right? There's all of the, infrastructure needs to continue to provide the services to all of the existing uses. So it's, it's very difficult. I feel as though since amendment number four, we focused on the Hancock lot, did not have a structure on it. We did have to manage the Town Brook relocation. But, you know, that type of planning and permitting on the public work takes time. You know, we were able to get through that. We've now shifted over to the Ross garage. That did have a structure on it. You know, so we had to work to take pieces of that, you know, garage down. But, you know, we started to take it down when we took out the Hancock lot. So we needed to take it down and then restore it for interim parking. So there is, you know, I think this came up in the Wallisting conversation, when do you start? I don't think there's a start time. I think you just begin. And I don't really think there's an end time. I just, you know, think you continue to work it as projects come forward. I'm really excited. The department here in the last six months was able to get the planning board to support the Fox Rock development as well as R3. So those are the, were sort of the last two that were out there. Took some time to get those fit and to get those right. So obviously, I'm looking forward to continuing to unlock these sites down here at the Ross garage and keep it going.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. I get it. It's just, please understand, like, I'm coming from a place where, like, I fully respect the fact that you all have had to pivot more times than I can ever imagine. I just, your time is valuable, right? And time is money. And, and look, it just, we appreciate when you come up here and give us this information. You do this for a living. Having to constantly pivot like that, it just, it's, what I see, it just, 20,000 feet up, it's frustrating. I cannot imagine the day-to-day it takes, right? And you don't have to say you're frustrated. I'm not like trying to get that out of you. I'm just saying that I am frustrated for the process, you know, not doing this every single day, let alone imagining doing it every single day. And I, you know, we have these expectations and trying to get answers from you all and holding you accountable to things that you cannot necessarily commit to. Because you, again, have to be nimble and pivot based off of what happens with these developers. And I just, I, I think, again, even specifically with the parking garage, like, let's come up with the numbers that we want to see then, right? Again, you all know how to do this, right? So you are planning ahead and you're estimating what will come with all these changes, right? And what the parking will look like. Well, then let's, let's commit to our bare minimum of what we need and let developers work around our plans, your plans, instead of the other way around, right? I just, I don't want to continue to be held hostage with, you know, again, what, Streetworks is not the same as Fox Rock. But it's like this, this sort of, you know, thing that gets committed. And then there's all this work that goes around planning around it. And then it changes and those changes aren't small changes, right? And it does impact, again, your time. It impacts directly finances. I just, I don't know. Again, I, I know the LDA, you had mentioned, right? Like, the LDA are agreements, yes, but, you know, those agreements are, I think, giving enough flexibility where plans can change. And we have seen that happen. I just, I think, I don't know if my question can be answered, right, today or if it's a bigger conversation. But I just would like to see moving forward with these parcels, again, even with Fox Rock as they move forward, some more stability and some more formal assurances about what's being committed so that you all can continue to plan accordingly and we can as well. So again, I say that with respect for what you all do. If we can continue that conversation, I, I would like to see what something like that can look like to have like codified commitments for these projects. Would you entertain that conversation?
Team will, yeah, team up and we'll definitely discuss that and get back to you.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you. Thank you all for sort of jumping up and down and answering my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Council Mahoney.
Thank you. Thank you for asking for that breakout, Nina. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just go, my, my notes are all over the place. I apologize. I left my package at home. So you're gonna have, I'm gonna just go through your presentation and ask questions as I, as I did. 1620 Hancock Street, that is the burnt-out building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and how long has that been burned out?
2001, I believe.
2001. When did it become part of in the URDP? When did we pull that?
We put it in, in amendment number five.
Amendment number five, so in 2019?
Correct.
Okay, and it's 2022, so we decided to hold on buying that until now. Okay.
Yeah, one of the reasons why, Council Mahoney, we did recognize that the parcel at the end, I don't have the address. Coleman Sporting Goods, currently good health, that parcel was put up in the market for sale.
Recently?
For sale, yes. We haven't heard whether they've made a decision or not, but we think that development in that block is likely. So it made sense.
I know, it's just an unfortunate thing. That building's been burnt out for 20 years. And we've seen everywhere we've gone and bought, by eminent domain, and we let that, this is something that, and this is, this is not a direct criticism, but it's a criticism just in general we all get. And, and I guess it is a direct criticism because we are sitting on things and watching them escalate in price, right? We are seeing our properties because we're being told all the time, our taxes are going down, but your taxes are going up because your assessed values are going up. Well, the same thing's happening with commercial. And we've let it sit there for 20 years, a burnt-out building, and we're going to probably pay top dollar for it. And when we turn around and we sell it to the developers, we never get that top dollar back. I haven't seen it yet. So it's very frustrating to the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, especially when we're taking out the money. And yep, the diff pays for itself, but the taxpayers are fronting the money for this to do it. And, you know, there is a, there's a, there's a consensus too, back when you had the SMP. We always say it pays for itself, but the SMP actually looks at it and incorporates the overall debt against the city of Quincy. So if there is a recession or if something does happen and if our assessed values start to go down and things happen, you know, there could be a potential problem in that situation. I hope we can actually maintain all the people who are renting the downtown. But that's just something that bothers me is that the, that, that piece of property has been sitting there for a long time. I noticed when we had, we cleaned up the downtown for the, the General's Bridge. It was nice that the city of Quincy paid for the painting of the building. I mean, that wasn't the owners', was it? It was, it was us that painted it? Yeah, that was great. I appreciate that too. We should have done that 20 years ago too. If we're going to maintain things and take care of things for people, we should probably just start doing it all for everybody. Because my house needs to be painted, so anytime you want to come on over and take care of that, I appreciate it. And I'm being sarcastic. I can't help that, but that's just, that's just who I am. So the redevelopment of 1245 Hancock Street, this is 2020 and beyond. What is 1245 Hancock Street, just so I can make sure we're talking about the same?
I believe that is the Monroe Office Building?
Mm-hmm, so that's the redevelopment of 1245 Hancock Street. And that is where we spent our American Recovery money. So we purchased a building and that's going to be 2020 and beyond. So that's going to be something else. That is not in the, is that part of the URDP?
It is not, no.
It's not. So that's going to be, but it's being part of the Quincy Center revitalization because the city of Quincy purchased it. And, and we're going to be paying for that too. So, and that's coming from the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. Whether or not the URDP, the AARP money was meant to, for all of the citizens of Quincy to, to benefit from. But this was actually just something that the administration benefited from because they could not get that something passed here at the city council. So they went ahead and used that money for that. So in the breakout in the diff number four, and this is for the $53 million. We have, and in the order that's in front of us, this is tricky because I have everything written in front of us. You have three order takings, which I think Mr. Walker explained, but you have four parcels you're taking. So you have 1455, 1459. Those are the two parcels that are near the two new developers that are, that are interested in developing. What is going to happen to 1455 and 1459? What's the hopes for those two pieces?
So those sites will be acquired. The building's cleared. Ultimately, a public space, a lot of the urban design principles that date back to the original plan at Timeswood, Streetworks. We have a lot of north-south roadways and much like the concourse, which is now Hanham Parkway, the east-west connections and linkages. So that area is targeted ultimately for public space improvements.
So potentially another pocket park type thing?
Right.
Okay, and if we weren't to purchase those today, what would, what would be the downfall for that? Just curious.
That, I'm not sure.
So why were these two properties identified then?
That'd have to go back to the mayor's office. Mr. Walker?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, there's always been within the URDP and the various iterations of the development plan, a breakthrough from Hancock Street to what was formerly called the Ross area to activate and facilitate development in that area. At one point in the original URDP, approved by the body back in '08, the building was, was 1459. That building is 1469. That building is currently fully occupied. This opportunity arose. And it makes sense considering that there are bookend developments on either side of it of a substantial nature. So it sort of called out for something that was going to happen, something that was always part of the plan. Something that we've talked about many times is that you sort of needed that pathway, that access point to the Ross area. So it's not sort of isolated as it was during, you know, pre, when there was a garage there and a few other things back there. It becomes more part of a whole as part of it, as opposed to its own thing.
Okay, so, but they're actually next to, aren't they next to, to, to of the potential new developers that are potentially?
Correct.
So those two parcels are next, they're next to, and they will become pocket parks? Will it be a road or a pocket park?
It's a park slash civic space slash access, pedestrian access point through the back.
And then we also have a pedestrian access point. Is it cottage ab that you kind of have the alleyway type of thing? Is that there too? Am I messing that up? Cottage, a little bit further down where you said you were identified 14, I think 70 was originally your plan?
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, exactly. That, that was the, the vision.
Is that where the FAC hat is now?
Yes, correct. That building would have been the original, take the original proposal to clear that space to create a wider. What's there right now is essentially an alley. It doesn't really benefit anyone. So you build upon that, you expand that. So originally in the original URDP and the Streetworks plan and the master plan, it was that building would go and now you've created this open pathway to the Ross area, basically expanding that alley by the size of the building. And was sort of replicating that vision in a different place where there are two, when there are two private development parcels ready to go.
Yep, and then, but that also, that one building you would have purchased might have been less money than the two buildings you have purchased.
I highly doubt.
Well, you might have, it might have been. You can highly doubt it, but it depends on the timing of which we're doing these things. So later on in the park, we changed our plans. We're purchasing these two things. And then 119 Parking Way, which was not identified in our orders of taking, but you're saying that we're taking that property as well, correct?
We are, we are buying that property.
You're buying that property, but you're still taking that property.
If we have to take it, we'll be back before this body with an order.
So is it, is it, is it, my, is this a new understanding that we have for the city council? That when the city of Quincy, the administration wants to purchase things, if you're buying it, you don't have to come before the city council to purchase something? So I was just asking the question because our charter says that it has to come before the city council to actually buy and wherever you have the money. It doesn't matter if you get the money.
Correct. In the order before the council, the appropriation order, very explicitly calls out acquisition of property in the, in the order. And that covers us.
But it doesn't, you're not actually calling, so this is the IHOP, right? This is the IHOP that you're purchasing?
Correct.
Okay, so what's going to go where the IHOP is? Why are we purchasing the IHOP?
That is potentially the area, most likely the area that will be a public parking garage.
That's the public parking.
In that area, yes.
But in the picture of where you have the public parking garage, it looks like it's open space and on page, and I just might be, I might be looking at it incorrectly. Let me go back to the page it's on. On page seven, well, actually, it says future development parcel. It doesn't say the park. So that's, so was that originally where the parking garage was going to go? Just curious.
I'll jump in. No, we originally were targeting, you know, running along the General's Bridge. But again, I think the thought is, is to fit the plate, the preliminary work that has been done with Desmond and citing that use flush, flush against the rail right away in Birmingham Parkway.
But I want to be clear as well. I mean, that could change. That, that could change. It could go perpendicular, it could go parallel. The flexibility is built within the plan. When we go to actually get the state and federal money, you know, we'll have a better sense because a lot of it's going to depend on what the private development in that area. This also creates two substantive development parcels between the IHOP property and the property the city already owns. How those things sort of fit on that block, it's kind of like a jigsaw puzzle. They could go one way, they could go the other. What we are going to do is maximize the benefit to the public via the parking and maximize the private development potential of that area. So they, they could change.
They could change, I know. So I know, because that whole, this is, I mean, this is, this is where Council Yang was getting frustrated. She was speaking in I statement, so I'm just going to say that she was frustrated. She expressed that in regards to the Ross parking lot because everything has changed in the Ross parking lot. Now, that's me saying that, but I was just interpreting what she was saying so nicely. And everything has changed in the Ross parking lot. And in fact, one of the original plans actually showed that particular part of the lot being something that, that Fox Rock was going to be developing. And to be completely fair, I know that Fox Rock was also in negotiations with 119 Parking Way and didn't go so well. So now the city of Quincy, once again, is stepping in and taking care of their friends and family and purchasing a building called 119 Parking Way called the IHOP. And we're also relocating them. And if this is somehow gifted back to Fox Rock, will we get the same price back? I doubt it. It's really problematic because the LDA that came before us for Fox Rock was very specific as to what we were supposed to get. And we're not getting anything close to it. Now, when we say, you know, an MOA or an LDA or however we want to say it, the reality of it is, is that we vote for things up here and we give away, that land was given to Fox Rock as development property for them to develop. But they didn't hold up their end of the bargain. What's, everybody's forgetting is the, the key to this is the master developer is the city of Quincy. It's the city of Quincy. It's the mayor's office. It's the, it's the planning board. We didn't get what we were expecting. And maybe we're not negotiating hard enough with Fox Rock, but it's really no different than Streetworks. We were anticipating getting something. Everything changed. We're settling for something. And what we're getting... changed. We're settling for something. And what we're getting is, uh, you know, we're getting commercial, but that commercial is going to be tax exempt because it's, it's medical and it has to be made up with. And in, and I'm going to get lost as to where this was, but in the presentation that was, um, provided to us, I think it's in the big, big binder, it gets mentioned that it's okay, that it's okay, the preliminary plans, plans for the Ross parking lot, Fox, Foxrock includes 150 square feet of medical office and 67,000 square feet of science space. However, the redevelopment effort is subject to a tax exemption that could impact the amount of diff eligible revenues received and, and excluded from the forecasted diff revenues. But don't work, worry because we're going to make it up when we eventually get to Star Market and the other lots that we're doing. It's definitely just concerning because I think this is where the frustrating, frustration was coming from my fellow colleagues because we work really hard. You work really hard. There's no, I'm not taking anything away from anybody. I know how hard everybody works in the city of Quincy. We want this to be successful. We have seen some of it be successful. To the success that we're hoping for, I don't think so because I know that residents at home, yeah, there's places to go and have, you know, there's places you can go and have something to eat or something to drink. I've enjoyed a beer at the Bear Garden. There's certain parts Kilroy Park that you're seeing some life coming back. We definitely had a pandemic that caused some problems for, for this happening. However, the promises of what we're having and what we're seeing are two different things. We have a lot of retail that's still open. We don't have them all filled. Now we have Foxrock saying, don't worry, we're not going to actually do the hotel and we're not going to actually do the residential portion, the affordable housing portion, the, the, um, the workforce housing portion of this. And we'll find another place to fit that in because that's part of the LDA that we're supposed to do it. Well, they've got all these other places and we can stick it someplace else to make sure they're getting what they want. But the cities, the citizens and the taxpayers of the city of Quincy are not getting what they were sold. The bill of goods are different and it's very upsetting. The, the other thing that's really upsetting is that they're going to put a two-story, from what I understand, a two-story, um, retail in the Ross parking lot. So far, we haven't been able to get any retail. So I'd be interested to know what's coming. I really hope it's something good because I would love to be able to spend my money in Quincy shopping. I mean, because we've been promised for a long time. But what we do know is when we started this, we were going to get box stores. That's, that was Street Works. But box stores were already going out of fashion back when we were talking about that. Then we were going to get all sorts of other things. But oh my God, did we just realize that Amazon has been around for the last 20 years? But thank God a pandemic happened and we realized it really does work. Not a lot of people are actually shopping in stores anymore. But this administration just figured that out, too. So now here we are and we didn't get what we're expecting with Foxrock, change of plans, but you guys negotiated. It's great. We know what's coming because they all got permitted. But here's the thing, we're still going to build a parking garage for them. We're buying the IHOP for them. And on the other side of it, they're going to get what they want. But I just hope that the taxpayers of the city of Quincy get what they expect too. And I'm really disappointed in the fact that, you know, we're talking about a garage that we're going to build and you're going to get grants for it, but that garage is going to house most of the Foxrock entities, I believe is what, what I'm hearing. The other piece that I have, I have to ask a question for, because you have relocations here and it's including 3.25 billion dollars of relocations. And you are including the burnt out building for those. Are you, are you planning relocating? Are there people in the burnt out building that I'm not aware of?
Uh, there's no one there. Uh, there are de minimis relocation expenses that an owner of a property can be eligible for. So we anticipated a very small amount there.
Okay. And then 119 Parking Way. So if, if for some reason anything other than a parking garage that benefits Foxrock goes to the parking lot where IHOP is, are we going to get reimbursed from Foxrock for that because they couldn't negotiate with, with, with another? This is the best part. What the city of Quincy is doing is they're purchasing 119 Parking Way from yet another developer in the downtown URDP. That's LBC. LBC owns that property. So now we're purchasing and it's, it's built into $53 million. It's built into, to this. And that's, you know, that's just, it's just wrong in so many ways because there's got to be a better way that we can, we can work on those things. Um, the other question that I have, and it's just goes back to the budgetary things. And, you know, we had a lot of money that was spent, um, in, in the last diff. And it's, it doesn't seem like a lot. It's actually pennies on the dollar when I say this, but there was $300,000 in marketing efforts that were spent, all different consultings, consulting money that was spent. Yet the number of retail spaces still that are open in the downtown is very discouraging to me. It just is. I mean, we're, we're lucky that we have people that are renting down there. That is the best part. But the money that we're spending, we're not seeing a return on investment as far as the retail that's coming in. I've gone around to other communities. I've seen growth happen in other communities, small little areas. Situate, Situate's downtown had nothing in it 10 years ago. You go to Situate's downtown right now, the little, little downtown on the, on the waterfront, buzzing, buzzing with, and like the shops that they have down there, there is no reasons why we shouldn't be able to have those kinds of shops up here, other than the fact that those small businesses don't get the same incentives that the developers get in the city of Quincy. Um, one other question that I had, and this actually is to Eric Mason, I think, because he said, I think, Mr. Mason, you said, I just want to, I can't find the page that was on. I think you said it goes back into the, how the diff works, goes back that, is it 696? This is in 2022, 696? Is that $1,000?
Wait, we, I'm sorry. I don't know what you're referring to.
You're on page 35 of the presentation. You were talking to Council Yang and you said the surplus in diff revenues, it's kind of gone up and down over the last couple of years, but 696, I'm assuming it's.
Yeah, thank you, buddy.
How much is it for this year? 2022 fiscal year?
I'd have to, I'd have to check, but for this year going into FY22.
It says for fiscal year 22, so I guess.
That would be this, we're in FY22. So the reappraisals, those are done, reevaluations done over the summer by the assessor's office. So FY23 would be when we set the tax rate in FY23.
So you said that the, the, the surplus diff revenues go back into, um, the tax, the, the general fund for taxpayers?
They're actually all part of the general fund. Diff is part of the general fund. It's, the losses has to be segregated, segregated into.
I know, but you said it goes specifically, it specifically it goes to, to lower our tax base.
It goes to net revenue that's collected through the city. So yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think that the, um, the residents of the city of Quincy would be really doubtful that, that anything's going to lower their tax base.
That's a thousand.
Yeah. So, so, so that is, that's definitely a question. So the, and then there was one other question that I had in regards to, and I don't know if this is you, Eric, but this is definitely, um, the diff modeling key assumptions and variables. In 2006, it's base year from which the diff incremental is calculated. Um, could some, could you, I thank you. I knew it was something that I couldn't remember who presented this part. Could you explain that once more for me?
I'm sorry. Could you tell me where you were again?
Yeah. It's on page 33 of your presentation. The diff model key assumptions and variables.
Sure.
I'm sorry. What's your first name, sir?
I beg your pardon?
I missed, what's your name? I, I'm sorry. I don't know what your name is. Your name?
Craig Seymour.
Craig, sorry about that, Mr. Seymour. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Um, let me walk through this again.
Sure.
The way the model is built, it looks at every parcel within the diff district on an individual parcel basis from the assessor's database, starting in 2006. Every year, those parcels are again looked at. Some of them, year by year, have been combined. Some of them have been split up into more parcels. Those adjustments have to be made. So there is a base assessment in each year on the value that the assessor puts on that property in each of those years. If there's new investment that takes place, such as someone buys an older property, tears it down and builds a new property, it's that new increment of assessed value that then we split out and say, all right, based upon that year's tax rate, how much revenue comes from that new investment, that new incremental assessed value that's there. That is then put into the diff fund. And as Mr. Mason pointed out, it's all in the general fund. It's just designated for the diff fund, which is then, through these authorizations, allocated for debt service to be used for the public investments in the downtown, in the diff district, to be used for enhancing the area in order to continue this redevelopment that you've been going on, that's been going on since 2006.
So, so in 2006, what you're saying, just, just so for, for the few people who pay attention to us and watch this at home. So what you're basically saying is if the, a burnt out building, this is the burnt out building, is assessed value that we're collecting taxes on, you, that's our base, right? And then a development goes there and the development's bringing in extra money. You're taking, you're basically saying the taxpayer, the, the general fund and the taxpayers are getting what from 2006 was, and then the incremental growth will go to the diff. Anything that's paced past that base that we've been able to collect, the improvement to that property will go to pay the diff. Is that pretty much right?
Correct. Correct. And let me, let me do it in very simple terms. Let's say that that property is now, brings in $100 in tax revenue.
Mm-hmm.
It is reinvested in and now brings in $500 in tax revenue. Okay? It's the $400 difference which goes into the diff fund, which is the increment.
Right.
The base value of $100 continues there, growing a little bit every year based on long-term trends. So the base 2006 assessment in center downtown is still there. It's only the new investment into that that has been, what we call captured by the diff.
So, so let me back. So, so the, so an assessed value of a property that's increased since 2006, does that same, does that, does that also increase since 2006? Are we increasing that general fund based off of that too? Or is it just, is it based off the 2006? I'm trying to figure out like, you know, we didn't buy the blue note. It's been burnt out for 20 years. When we bought it 20 years ago, it'd probably be cheaper than it was today, right? Potentially. So I'm just trying to understand if the 2006, is that also the assessed value of something that's increasing in property? Are we also getting assessed and a bump up in that assessed value for the general fund?
It, it is based upon what the assessor has valued it at and what it values out, it's valued at now.
Right.
Historic versus the old. And you have to, even though it might sell for a bigger price.
No, I understand.
Or market value, it's, you know, it.
There's a huge change in the market. I understand that. But I guess what I'm trying to say is that, that, that should, should the market go the other way, where all of a sudden we're, you know, we're not recession proof in the world, right? And all of a sudden something happens in the downtown and we have to keep up with certain things. We have a, we have a surplus in the diff, but that same thing is necessarily going to be giving back as much potentially if the numbers went the opposite way. Potentially.
Yeah. Um, assessed values can theoretically go down.
Mm-hmm.
They have in certain circumstances, very rarely, I'll have to say, but that does happen. So it is something that obviously market values can go down and assessed values can go down.
Yeah. And then one other question, and I understand that. I guess I just, I just feel like the, you know, again, being sold a bill of goods for the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, I don't think there's anybody that doesn't think that we should be trying to improve what our downtown is. However, what we were promised and what we're getting are two different things. And the general fund is being able to keep that base price of what the properties were like before we actually developed them. But what the taxpayers of the city of Quincy are getting was more congestion, not the shops that they wanted to shop at, not the promises of the dreams that we have. We can come downtown to go to a restaurant, but it's not quite what we, there's, it's just not quite envisioned as to what we thought we were going to be. And just by using the Ross parking lot as an example, because I've only been on the council for the last several years. I haven't been here since 2006, but I've been watching this since 2006. I do think there's some, there's some pluses that are happening in the downtown, but there are also some huge problems that we're having and the Ross parking lot is one of them. We were promised something. We were told we were going to get something and switch point, switch bait, whatever we want to call it. We're getting something that's completely different and not what we expected. And we've been waiting for a really long time. And now we're going to buy the IHOP for them. The financial approach that was provided in, I think the 2016, um, piece, this is something that always kind of amazed me too with the diff money. So we spend all this money in diff, $300,000 in, in investment for marketing. That seems to be, there's a lot of businesses that have lost their businesses, have not got their buyouts, had to go to court with the developers, some of the developers that we've had that are controlling them. There are currently a couple of, um, of people that are, that are still in some of the buildings that we've, LDAs have been provided to that they're, they haven't been negotiated or bought out, bought out yet. These are businesses that actually sustained some of the downtown for a really long time. So it's a little disrespectful what we do to the businesses in the downtown. Um, but in the financial approach in the 2016, and I, I like to go back and look at things too, as to what we talk about and what we actually do. What it says is the estimated cost of completing these urban renewal activities, um, either the city will accommodate the cost of providing the structured park, structured parking and the value of the land disposed, disposed for this as a means of paying for these public urban activities. The city intends to utilize recently secured federal and state specifically targeted for redevelopment activities in the downtown area. Quincy's diff financing program will not be, will, will be used only for gap funding. The diff program is not adopted. The city will employ traditional borrowing techniques and will seek other grants in the district financial, um, financials of the URDP. I think we have to be careful about how much we're doing because right now we're, we're funding purchases, $53 million. And we have an estimate that we say we're buying for the IHOP. Could go more? We have no idea. We also have, um, you know, American, American Rescue Recovery money that could go to certain things too. But we're seeing it be used for all of the wrong things and none of the right things. But the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, what they can count on from this administration, what they can count on from the city council is that we're going to say that this, that these bonds get said yes to and their tax is going to go up. And what they're looking for is to be just a little bit more conservative of what we're doing and making sure that we know what we're doing before we say yes to it. I guess my disappointment is, is that we are two more meetings away before summer break. We call it summer break because we don't meet over the summer. We've had, um, five years with the LDA of Ross parking lot, um, that they've never come, we've asked a million times for Foxrock to come back before us and they haven't. We're being asked to bond $53 million more on the downtown, yet, and it has to be done. Um, Mr. Walker said it has to be done before we go, the next, the 21st of June is our last meeting. So basically we have two meetings to make a decision about these things. And what we've actually come away with is that, um, we, if we want to know what the appraised values of, we have to make an appointment with the, the legal team to be able to see what these things are and that there's a, the IHOP again is, is identified and not actually provided here because we're just going to purchase it because the city of Quincy now can just buy things without actually telling anybody what they're doing. And we don't know how big a garage is going to be because we're speculating on what we're going to do. Um, we just have a lot on our plate in the city of Quincy and I get really concerned because you're seeing balls fall in every corner. Um, and it's not just, it's not just here. I've seen it. I've gone to the, I've gone to the planning board. I know how hard you guys work. You have developers that are not providing you things. You're an hour into meetings when you find out you don't have it. It's just extremely frustrating. So I can't imagine what it's like to be working in your department because it's, it's, you've got a lot going on. But at the same time, we have a lot going on too, and the city has a lot going on. So we, I, I think we need to have these meetings more frequently. I think it's great to have a communication plan that you can share with all of us, but we, we meet from September until June. We are two meetings away before we go on break and you guys are coming before us. I'm sure you wish you could be here earlier. I'm sure you wish you could be. But to rush something like this doesn't make sense at all. And I think if we were more informed, we would be able to, I would be able to get more behind this. But it's not a matter of me coming into your offices to figure these things out. The taxpayers of the city of Quincy want to know what's happening too. And this meeting is two meetings away from, from the end of the year. And there's no reason why we couldn't have had this September, October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May. We're in June. It's just disappointing to me. It really is. It's heartbreaking really because we rush things and we don't do things right. And it's, it's just so discouraging. Um, but again, at the same time, when I say all that, I do appreciate and know how hard you all work. I've gone to many, many, many of your meetings. Unlike my fellow colleague, Councilman Muchi, I actually enjoy going to them. Some of them I learned things at. But, um, but this, I'm just disappointed in because I wish you could have been here earlier. I wish we could have had some of this discussion. Um, the IHOP is just putting me right over the, the edge tonight because that is just another, we've given away the Ross parking lot. They're not giving us what they, Foxrock is not giving us what they promised at this meeting when we, when that LDA was approved. And now the city of Quincy is bailing them out again by any IHOP. And it's, it's super, super, super discouraging. And the taxpayers should be paying attention to this. Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy.
I'll try to, uh, remember what I wanted to ask. Um, Mr. Stevens.
Good evening.
Welcome. First of all, thank you. Uh, great presentation. Uh, plenty of information. I, I have the, the lodge map that was inside the, um, binder out. And I just wanted to ask a couple of hypotheticals that probably aren't, um, answers that you're going to have, but possibilities. In regards to the Hancock, I'm over in the Hancock lot, uh, and the, and the parcels that are still available, especially the R4, R3 parcel, uh, there at, at Hancock and Revere. Um, there's always the potential for someone to come in or for planning to, um, maybe suggest that because of the type of building or whatever ends up in there, and I'm sure we'll have something there very soon, that parking will come into play in those buildings, that they'll have their own.
Correct. Yeah. And.
I just want to, before you go, I just want to make a point. The, the Hancock garage, um, and I know that Counselor Palmucci had brought up that some of it's residential, but, um, and I know we had COVID and we didn't have a, a good two years to judge, but I think the last several months we have, um, there isn't any issues, uh, over in that garage at all. It's actually, um, worked out quite well in regards to, uh, that whole area. I mean, that area is tremendous now with Kilroy Square and, and some of the other, um, amenities I mean, that area is tremendous now with Kilroy Square and some of the other amenities that have been put in. But I'm just talking, you know, we were always talking, we were talking a lot about parking tonight, you know? And, and people will come as, especially since we've turned the corner on, on a lot of issues. But just could you speak to that? Is that something that you suggest so we get more parking? Or is that something out of our hands?
Right. No, it's a suggestion, absolutely. In fact, on those Hancock lot parcels, they were subject to an LDA. And this past Wednesday, the planning board approved a certificate of consistency application for the R3 parcel, sort of that Hancock Revere Road piece. And I believe they are providing about 60% of their parking load. And then the remaining percentage is going to get bundled in with the Nova Suites parking allowance, which is 150 spaces in the Kilroy garage. They'll manage some extra parking capacity within that garage under their current Nova development. We believe the R2, that's the one on the corner across from the courthouse, that would need to demonstrate it has an ability to, you know, provide parking on site. Whether it can meet the thresholds remains to be seen. That one's still in development review, sort of preliminary review rather, not a development review.
So we talked a little about the courthouse also. Is there any talk, because I thought there was talk of the state, county, whoever's involved in the courthouse, city, that Foster Ave, some of those parcels going down Foster Ave would be entertained.
Yeah.
Along, you know, where I'm talking around the corner where we have Miller Studio and I don't want to get anybody nervous, but you know, those, those areas there.
Right.
It seemed to make sense, so.
Yeah. The planning director's had some direct contact with that DCAM, so he's, he's willing to provide.
Yeah, because I think that would be another quick solution. A lot of times we get up here and, and everything turns into, you know, we get a little bit out of control about it's the end of the world, no parking. And the T station went away behind me and, and that wasn't an issue with all that parking. They found parking. So it's kind of funny, sometimes we blow everything out of proportion and there's a parking solution at the, at the end of the day. So Mr. Fassi's?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor McCarthy. I've been working with an individual by the name of Emily Glevy. She is the Director of Development for DCAM and the court, the Justice Centers are her, her responsibility. They came to us in 2018 with some questions, some thoughts. And we shared, as Counselor Palmucci had very clearly said, you know, some other places that they may want to look to redevelop. They have returned to us recently, so probably almost four years later, and said that, you know, we're trying to cite this courthouse. What they would require would be to purchase the current courthouse if they were going to stay where they are. So I'm going to get to the Foster Street piece in a minute. They would be interested perhaps in purchasing the property on McGrath Highway, which many people call it the McIntyre Building, which is in between the courthouse and the Galvin commercial building.
Sure, the low, yeah.
As far as the Foster Street side of the site, there are two law firms that abut, and then there's the photo place. This is all things they're looking at. They were given a number of places that we thought they should look at. Unfortunately for them, other things, or other folks stepped up a little bit more quickly. I, the MBTA stepped up and said that they would like to purchase the Lowe's site. A parking, excuse me, a storage facility was built on another space that was mentioned to them to look at, right across from Home Depot, next to the Quincy Adams Station. They have told me that they need about two acres of property to do a full-blown justice center that is similar to the ones they've built in other communities. The difference is we are a little bit more dense in the area where they're looking at. They probably are not able to go or have thought about going with steel construction, which could bring that courthouse from the current height to something above six stories. So they're looking at that entire site. They're actually coming out to visit and kind of look at the downtown through new eyes because some of their staff has changed. I've invited them for a walking tour to see what's actually transpired. Emily Glevy actually lives in Dorchester and has come out to the, the city on a number of occasions. She's very fond of the Target in North Quincy at the, at the train station. But I'm going to, again, suggest that there are options they have as the Commonwealth. I think there is the building that is for sale. We'll call it the, again, they don't have it under agreement. They have no PNS on it. I'm clear on that. They have no PNS or offers in on any buildings on Foster Street. Each one of those would require a negotiation directly with the owners. So that's just where we are. But what has changed is when they came and looked at this, this parking garage was being built and basically the next time that they had an awareness, and this is according to them, where we run a call with them, the mayor and others, they realized, they, they were hoping that we would have excess parking capacity in the municipal garage. The municipal garage has some pressure on it from the residential, you know, buildings that have gone, which was part of the original plan, was to provide that parking to those particular owners of, of the properties that were built. And at this stage of the game, we've learned a few things. Have they used all the parking spaces that they were allocated? In some cases, they've used a lot of them, but not all of them. They have, you know, brought in their own parking people to kind of think about if they wanted to do more parking. That's something that everybody does when they come into Quincy Center. They hire a parking engineer who takes a look at the area. So the state's no different. They have their own parking engineers. They're working with us. I, I can't speak to the number. And the reason it's a little hard is currently we have a county courthouse. We have an experience with that county courthouse. But of course, many of those folks that used to work at the courthouse are now continuing to work remote. So some of those people won't be back. They have security reasons for wanting to have the judges and department heads and other folks on their site. Their parking right now is X amount of spaces and their employees are X amount of employees. That's going to change dramatically if they get a full-blown justice center there. So we're waiting for those estimates. I've asked them specifically, they could tell me how many parking spaces they believe they'd use. They've done studies of who uses the T. Frankly, it's more for the employees that they need the parking. Many of the people that go to the courthouse are not necessarily going to park there, at least that they haven't been historically. So there's a lot going on with that site. But, you know, the city of Quincy is doing well in our downtown right now. And as, you know, we can see the changes, so can people outside. They're anxious to do something, but they have to get in line with everybody else to make sure that we can meet their needs. And that's just literally hot off the presses from last Thursday.
I was just, like I said, I just, just a thought as Brian was, Counselor Palmucci was talking about it.
He's, we, we need more information for us to be able to offer them any kind of accurate forecast as to whether there would be any capacity in the city garage.
And I, and I'm, I'm pleased with the, you know, that, that thought of that second garage. And I'm, the number two, you know, 1,000 or more as, as Fox Rock develops that area and other folks come into those parcels, you know, it, it, to me, it's a good number, you know, between Hancock and between the garage that will show up for the activity.
Yeah, Fox Rock has committed to build a parking garage, and I think the number is 514 spaces, it sticks in my head. That's going to be abutting the medical office building. And of course, between that and the retail spaces at the north, at the north end of the lot, which is the narrowest portion of the lot.
Sure.
That's, that's where they're playing, they're, they're planning, that's what they proposed. And that's the current parking situation to satisfy them. But as, as Mr. Walker and others mentioned, that as each plan comes in, we look at what the parking requirements are and we work with them to get, get where we got to go.
Thanks, thanks, Jim, Rob. Also, in regards to Fox Rock over here, even though it's, it's touching the downtown and World One right here, I've had great success with Josh Kleinman and, and company in regards to that Citizens Bank and the Masonic. The neighbors have been informed, they've been very proactive. The Citizens Bank was, was tired and needed to come down and we knew that the Masonic temple had to move. So I'm, I'm very pleased with what's going on over there.
That's a great point. Counselor Yang had concerns about, you know, community information. And I monitor everything that's coming off of Hospital Hill and I monitor everything that's coming off of those two sites over there. And they are, they have a website up for both projects. You can go on and take a look and see what's going up in, in both cases. They're informing the residents of the street closure currently, as you know, over here. And they're, you know, basically keeping people up to date with what's going on around the sites, including the sidewalk up on Whitwell and, and so forth. So they're doing a better job than they were in the past. And that has a lot to do with the counselors speaking to them and having a dialogue and some of the structure of, of their agreements with, with the city as well.
You know, about the street closure, you know, you're right, the communication between myself, the mayor and, and Fox Rock about Ann Al Graziosi and DPW and traffic, the traffic engineer, Ellie Rule, just, we went back and forth. You know, it was going to be more closed than it was going to be open in regards that in between the Masonic and Citizens. So it's probably the right move for a couple of months to get that, to get that all done. And they're, they're moving forward. So no, great presentation to everyone. Everyone did a great job and thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor DeBono. Counselor President DeBono.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of my fellow counselors have asked and raised a lot of questions. Just want to get a few, few comments, maybe a few questions here. As, as obviously we've been going along with your presentation, thank you for coming in tonight. It's been, it's been a few years, obviously. I felt like I was looking over at Brad Crowell over here and Kirsten Hughes over here and, and all the other colleagues that we used to serve with here, that Joe Finn, and now we're looking at a little different group. But anyways, you know, obviously along the way, there's going to be modifications just based on, you know, pandemic, economy, you know, demand of certain goods, inflation, all these different factors will, will play into the modifications that you've done. I think really at the end of the day, what, what, what is it going to bring to the citizens of Quincy? These diff authorizations and obviously the infrastructure improvements that have to be made to make the amenities for the citizens of Quincy to enjoy. Obviously, you're coming in at a good time because they can actually see it, they can touch it, they can sit in it when they go to Kilroy Square or the fours or the 16C and all those little area around that new parking garage, the Hancock Garage. And there's parking there. And then when you build parking, you can allow to have the amenities around it. I think that's where we're kind of going on this with this presentation is we've got to get to the next, you talked about parcel by parcel. We've got to get to the, to the next section over, I guess I could say, on the Ross side, as well as doing little pockets throughout the URDP and the diff, diff configuration, I guess I can say. But it's all a piece of a puzzle. I mean, there's so many different factors that play into this. But really what I have, you know, the question that I really have is how important that these takings will be. These takings are considered for public use. Can you elaborate a little bit more why the takings are so important?
Right. So in the, in the proposed, you know, diff for financing, there's, there's four eminent domain or four takings suggested. The pair, the two that are together are tied to obviously the city's strategy articulated in Urban Renewal Amendment 5, where we identified a number of the buildings on the west side of Hancock Street that through 10-plus years of urban redevelopment, those owners did not come forward with any redevelopment ideas. And these are properties that had restrictions on upper story because they weren't fire sprinkled. There are properties that had historic releases of heating oil in the soil. Some of them were addressed, some of them were not. So these were, you know, when, when we built the urban renewal plan, we've got to make certain findings. And, you know, the finding that was made here in Quincy Center was an area of decadence. You know, the age of structures, the condition of structures. And I would say these buildings on the west side of Hancock Street fit that definition. So as we're getting around to, you know, moving from Hancock Lot over to the Ross Garage and the investments the city has made, we've identified those two properties to help support a private investment. But again, back to that urban renewal principle of Hancock Street, Parking Way, Washington are north-south and providing some of that east-west connectivity. A typical urban main street, you know, has a limit. You know, that, that construction of Han and Parkway, sometimes I look at the school in Elm Street and Quincy Center, that's about, you know, a half mile, a quarter mile. We constructed the Han and Parkway. I think now that roadway's been up and that provides great east-west connectivity. So it's allowing us to look back inside and looking for that same pedestrian connectivity. And we're adding new public space, which has been one of the core goals of urban renewal since the beginning. As it relates to 119 Parking Way, that area with the new roadway infrastructure from the bridge and McConville Way is, is designed to handle traffic circulation off of Bergen Parkway to steer them into the garage, into a future garage in that area. They'll either come over the bridge or even go up to Granite Street. One of the MIPA analysis that was done when urban renewal was first permitted was an automobile coming off of Bergen Parkway. Obviously, the intersection that's there now where the Petco is, there's not enough queuing room. I think we've all been caught in that intersection. So we want to push that intersection back to line up to McConville. But in doing so, that, if we were to allow a left turn movement to get to that garage off of Han and Parkway, that starts to mess up with the traffic circulation as a whole. So we want folks to stay on Bergen Parkway and right in to that Ross lot. So that's really key for citing that garage. Our goal was to, in demolishing the Ross Garage, was to replace it with a new garage, hopefully in a better structure and unlock future development sites. That's what we're carrying out. As far as the 1601 Hancock, that's in the urban renewal area. It's south of the bridge. We're seeing interest grow down in that area. But it was time to move on that building and the, one of the parcels, private parcels on that site, the site of the Health Store was recently put up for sale as well. So we think, we've always thought that that, that block, that corner was ripe for development. That dates back to the very first vision plan where there was the four corners around the Concourse and Hancock Street intersection. So it's just, it's sort of the timing. The markets now start to look in that area. Hopefully that helps explain the question a little bit more from a urban design and urban principle approach to those locations.
It's very important, Mr. Stevens, because obviously the parking, you have to put the parking in place to allow all this other activity, all this other construction. And you have to put the proper traffic flow. You have to have the flow go where people come in here and, and with vehicles. And then you have to have the foot flow, the foot traffic, where this public use will allow some type of green space, open space to allow folks to kind of walk through these particular areas, which we kind of see outside the fours, the O'Connell Building there, where you can see the green. where you can see the green space in there, as well as the General's Park area, we can see the green space where it can actually flow. I think you come in at a good time because people can actually see it and feel it and actually visualize and walk the grounds. Whereas we were coming in some years ago where it's a big leap of faith. You don't know what it's going to look like, you don't know how it's going to evolve. Where do you say, see, where do you, if you can make a measuring stick of where are we in this process? Are we at 50%? Are we at 35%? Where are we, do you think, of fully finishing this operation, I guess, outside here? Where do you think we are?
I'm trying to keep it tight. I'd say, you know, again, the two city assets, the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage. The Hancock Lot, we've got one additional development site, the R2, to figure out on that site. And, you know, that's, obviously, we've got the courthouse. There's still East Chestnut, too, tied to the Quincy Mutual Development and the West of Chestnut Development. So that's, you know, 75, 80% on that side, if not more. Ross Garage, you know, we're still, we've got the one first project, the big anchor project permitted. They're currently in the MBTA review process after that permit. But once that's in place, we're expecting a lot more development interest to come forward. I would say that one's probably more at the 25, 50%. So again, we've focused with Urban Renewal Four onto the Hancock Lot. That was the easier of the two lots. That was the one we could address more quickly. There wasn't a structure on that site. So that's, you know, that's been, what, five, six years? We've been working on that, and you can see how far we've come. And then now we're focusing on the Ross Garage area.
As we've gone along with this process, is it, is the marketing getting a little bit, I want to call it easier, but is it being more enticing to say, listen, look what we're doing here in Quincy? Are there more people, more businesses or developers or entities trying to take a bite at the apple? Are you guys getting more phone calls that, hey, listen, I think Quincy is where it needs to be, and we can take it to another level?
Yeah, I think, you know, we opened that garage in the September, and then, you know, COVID hit, you know, six months later in March. I kind of had a sense it was starting to, you know, we were starting to get some interest, and then COVID happened. I'd have to say, coming into this year, seen a lot more tourists coming in and hitting the church up and accessing the visitor center, talking to Bob Damon and getting some of the interest there. Driving down, seeing folks doing field trips down at the birthplaces. It's pretty neat. I do think this year, we are starting to see a lot of the city's efforts with trying to enhance some of the tourist and visitor experience. And I think we're starting to see that with some of the businesses as well. We mentioned, I think, the Chamber of Commerce has done a lot to step into that void, to do, you know, the Winters Market and some other events and sponsor. They were a big proponent of that President's Trail Walk, and, you know, they did some other pup-up shops over the holidays. So I think, you know, working closely with our stakeholders, we've made some really good progress in this about last year, you know, coming out of the, you know, the real meat of or the heart of the pandemic that we all experienced.
Good news is we're coming out of the major of the pandemic. But on the flip side, the interest rates are starting to rise a little bit. So we just have to kind of offset that somehow. So I'm glad you guys are here at the table, trying to move the city forward in the right direction. I'm very optimistic that things are going to work in the right direction. We'll have to make modifications as we go along. But you can't leave it just sitting there. I remember coming in in 2015, when I came on the council in '16, it was like a bomb went off out there. And West of Chestnut was the only one really being kind of constructed. And then it, parcel by parcel, we moved along, and here we are, 2022. So there'll be modifications as we go along. But I think it's very important that we put the infrastructure in place correctly and have the proper public use for some of these, obviously, takings that we would possibly be on the table tonight. But I appreciate you guys coming in. There's a lot to see this booklet here and go through what we've been talking about over the last few years that we haven't been able to do, obviously, with the COVID times and putting the brakes on, I guess I could say, would probably, trying to have a vision on Quincy. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I have any more questions, some of the colleagues might come on back on, but looking forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, the chair's going to take a moment of privilege to ask some questions. Question, on the $53 million diff financing, have we looked at, is this to seed getting the state and federal money? I'm just thinking, what's coming out in infrastructure money? What's coming out? I know they still have the oppo money from like Norfolk County that's out there. There's a lot of different sources. And are we putting this up forward? Are we expecting to get monies also from those other sources?
Yeah, I spoke of iQubed, which is a state program that's been in place for some time. City was preliminarily approved a number of years ago. It needs job growth and the income tax off that. We've experienced a lot of residential upfront development. We're hopeful that the MOB, the Medical Office, is a sign of a pivot to more commercial space. With that said, I would, I know we're pursuing a lot of the federal infrastructure grants. Mr. Walker, I don't know if you've got anything a little more specific. I know when we spoke, there's a number of different programs, a number of different agencies, and I believe the mayor's office has assets working on that.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chairman. This diff financing is a complement to what we anticipate to receive from the state and federal government through various stimulus, various infrastructure packages, various commitments that have been made. Rob mentioned iQubed. There are a number of other programs out there right now that the administration, Mayor Koch, and the partners on this body have with the Baker administration, with, in the State House, and on the federal level through the work, working of Congressman Lynch, that there's just, there's really a great number of opportunities that we have actively pursuing. And, you know, we have great hope that the actual construction of this garage is going to be, a large chunk of it, if not all of it, will be financed by outside funding.
So you're looking at all the different options?
Every door is being opened.
Okay. Because I think there's, you just, I sit on the Norfolk County Advisory Board, and I know that money. And I see a lot of cities and towns. I know Quincy has applied for the intersection down by the shipyard where they want to redo the whole intersection. And there is money that is widely available out there, and I'd like to see that we, as you did in the other, under other funding, pursue all that. I know the Hancock Adams Green was almost totally state and federal money. And I think we should look at that money first to see if we can get our hands on it and offset what the taxpayers are going to be paying. So I would, I'm glad to see that you're in doing that. And you mentioned the medical office building. Now, I'm not sure who this question would be for. Is that, I know we tax residential and commercial at a different rate. Is the medical office building being taxed at the commercial rate?
Okay, that'd be a question for Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the 121A agreement under the LDA, it currently, as it exists, is a zero-tax agreement because it was going to be a medical office building and it was promoting commercial growth. That being said, the mayor and Fox Rock are actively discussing a payment in lieu of that will provide revenue outside of what is built into the diff program, outside of what all of our expectations were, going back to the 2019 LDA. It was never anticipated that that building would produce tax revenue, but Fox Rock has agreed to discuss with the mayor and discuss with the city, providing tax revenue from that building. So we do anticipate developing a plan, a payment in lieu of, that will provide revenue from that building.
So if I'm not mistaken, right now, that is, when we're figuring it out on the diff, I don't know if this is a question for Greg, is that, so are they paying taxes? And I guess, no?
No, and it was not anticipated under, and Mr. Seymour can speak to it in more detail, but it was never anticipated in the model that it would.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In our model, we have included no revenue from the MOB and the lab space that's together there, based upon the original discussion on that. I do want to say, however, that if it is taxed, it may be taxed at a higher rate than just office space. We've been dealing with the assessor. There are no comps for that type of space or comparable sales for her to base an adjustment on. So as it is right now, she's looking at it as office space. In other cities that are also running diff programs, such as Somerville and Charleston, not Charleston, but Cambridge and others, lab space is being assessed there at very, very high rates. And so the opportunity of expanding more private medical office space and lab space in the downtown area is in addition to, would be in addition to the diff revenues that we have, that we've incorporated into the model. And the new parking garage, one of the things that the planning that's being done for that, that is going to support not only the other downtown areas, but also up to 200 plus, 210,000 square feet of new office space adjacent to it, which again, will be a big tax, you know, benefit for the city.
And we will be taxing them at the personal property level? Like, when they go in, obviously, own a business in Quincy, I pay the personal property, I pay the personal property tax. And obviously, that would be something that would be built to a medical office building, I would think.
Right, yes. Every property has an assessed value that the assessor puts against it. It could be tax-exempt, which means it doesn't pay taxes, or it could be subject to a 121A type agreement, in which it's a negotiated payment in lieu of taxes.
So they would be, and if we went in around the way of Somerville, we'd be looking at actually more than just commercial. So the assessor's looking at is commercial office space right now, but that would be providing more tax revenue and actually increasing.
Correct. And when it actually hits the tax rolls, they'll decide then what the value is going to be.
Okay, okay. And another question, I think this is for you, Rob. And I think whenever, when I sat at all those meetings, the four-hour meeting over on the medical office building that I went through, when we were going through the whole change, one thing I brought up at the meeting, and I asked for certain conditions that I brought, I'll bring up again, you know, Council Yang brought up about letting people know what's going on downtown. We used to get the thing from Tom, that was the clerk of the works, who used to keep us very well informed of everything going on. There used to be a regular newsletter and everything. You could basically see what was happening. I also like to remind everyone that there are now neighborhoods downtown. That was our ultimate goal, we wanted that to happen. But along with that, also when you're building, you know, that you're not starting at 4:30 in the morning. I know there were times when construction started rather early in those areas, and all of a sudden, we started to have people living down there, and complaints started to come in because people were starting at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. And I noticed on this, we're looking at soil removing, we're also looking at utilities. So communication down there on what's going on is going to be key because you're going to be shutting off people's power, you're going to be doing different things. And there is a whole neighborhood living down there. I mean, the condos.
Yep.
Those people actually living there, I hear from them often on different issues. And they're living there, and that's their home now. And that's what we, that's our ultimate goal, what we wanted to happen, and it has happened. You get less sometimes from the apartments, but there's still people living there. And noise and different things going on all have to be taken into consideration, particularly when we're doing the utility projects and when we're also going in and doing the soil removal. I'd be concerned because all of a sudden, you're taking contaminated soil and everything and removing it. And do you have to go before the Conservation Commission on that or anything? Or is that just?
In that specific location, no, but there will be, obviously, the Inspection Services Department, the building permit, demolition, soil removal.
Well, they'll have to go through all the rules and everything. Well, I ask when those things come up, that we remember that we have to inform the neighbors. We have to keep them involved in what's going on down there. Because I think we ran into it a couple of times on the General's Bridge, where, you know, pile driving started at about 6 o'clock in the morning and a couple of other things that had happened during the time. And that we do have a population living down there now. They love the park, it's a great job, and everyone's happy with that. But we also have to take into consideration, unlike when the first West of Chestnut went up, there was no one living down there, now there is. And I think along with informing the businesses, it also behooves the city to inform the residents down there who are paying the taxes. They're living in a condo, they're paying, you know, they're paying taxes, and they're just like a home, and that's how we should be treating them. And I think any of your plans has to take into account the residents in that area and also the business owners. I mean, Council Yang brought a great point up, that that's something. I know a couple of times with the, before they started doing those regular updates, there was some concern, some things happened, businesses didn't know what was going on. But along with the businesses, you also have the residents now, and they have to be in the loop in any of the things we're doing down there. And let me just take a look. Okay, parking garage, so, that's, those are basically my questions. At this time, I'd like to put the, unless any councilors have any questions, I'd like to put this back into committee. And also, Jen has been taking down all the notes of all the questions, and after the morning, if she gets in in the morning, we'll send those out to the councilors, and then they will refer it out to the mayor's office. So we get more questions, and we're probably looking to do a meeting before the next council meeting, finance committee meeting. But I'll be discussing that with the president and getting his approval on that. But unless, is there any other questions from any councilors? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you, Councilor.